I think it's the first Wednesday of the month.
Okay.
Which would be that day. Is that the eight eight and eighty nine are the matrix?
Yeah.
You're on this version?
I don't know why, that's very odd.
Yeah, that's like, right? No, I just, I don't understand.
Maybe she just missed it when she said.
Or at least just say, okay, from here.
Sorry.
That's because you've been operating in this area and that's fine, so.
Waiting for two more council members and we call them. Good, super. All the meeting to order?
That will be need to be addressed later on. So, in terms of the scope of work, one of the things we'd like to say is, first of all, these are the development permitting fees for planning, building, and engineering. And there really are the fees that support the operations and maintenance of all the permitting functions, they are not the impact fees. So, we're not talking about those impact fees which are generally related more to capital improvements and other things. So, these are just the amount of fees that you charge to be able to process the various types of permits. And so, one of the things that we were tasked to do is, again, identify the full cost of service of a development permit or activity, and we've broken it out into the three categories, which would be building, planning, and engineering. And then, once we did that, and we identified the full cost, we then looked at the current fee structure and the full cost of service and identified, well, what was your cost recovery level? So, are you recovering the full cost of service? And finally, as the last part of our study, we looked at, what are some of the comparable fees, and how do they compare with these five cities, which are basically Kent, Renton, Federal Way, Sumner, and Puyallup? And so, we have some information on that, too. So, in terms of our methodology, we sort of have this five-step kind of methodology. The first three steps really are what we call our technical analysis. And one of the things we'd like to say is, it really, to do this requires a lot of time from the staff and Jeff's group and staff, and the engineering staff as well, spent a lot of time trying to gather data for us and do their time estimates and things like that. So, there were active participants in putting this all together. So, one of the things that we first do is, when we start collecting the data, is to identify what the fee services are and what the non-fee services are. And so, fee services might be things like what you're used to seeing as a building permit, a conditional use type permit, or a right-of-way permit. When we talk about neat, non-fee services, we're usually talking about something like long-range planning, or code compliance, those are all things that we consider to be non-fee services. And the crux of everything, especially for all the fixed fees, is trying to identify the amount of time spent processing a particular permit. And that's one of the things that we did, and we, what we did was, we met with different groups, and we sort of held focus groups, and we went through this laundry list of all your individual fees and said, who's involved with the fee, what positions, and generally, how long does it take, on average, to process this type of permit? Next, we sort of put all this together, we put the non-labor costs, so, you know, supplies, you know, training cost, facility cost, all those things, IT cost, all put that into the mix, too, as well as all the labor cost. And then, we also add overhead costs. So, the overhead cost comes in two levels, really, there's sort of the departmental and division overhead, and then there's what we call the citywide overheads, which are things like finance and human resources, and even yourselves, the city council, those costs get allocated today. Once we have all those costs, we build what we call cost layers, and we identify what is considered direct service, which is time spent and costs associated with a particular person working specifically on a permit. Indirect support services, we identify as those things which might be the counter-support, answering questions, it might be just general administration, just as part of their job, or training kinds of activities that they would come, and we consider those kinds of things basically indirect support services. And then, like I said before, we add department overhead and citywide overhead. Once we pull all this together, then we get the full cost of the service, and we do it by large fee category, which would be all the things that relate to building permits, all those things that relate to current planning permits, as well as various engineering permits. And these are all put together in just one large category, so we try and keep things put together. They're not organizationally, they're basically put together based on the function, so. And then, once we have the full cost recovery, then we take a look at what kind of revenues are generated. So, we have the nineteen, or twenty seventeen revenues that we put together, and then we compare those to the cost. And then, we have to, from your standpoint, or the elected official standpoint, we have to then decide, well, what should the cost recovery be? Should it be full cost recovery, which means we're going to get 100% of the cost? In many places, you know, that's, the theory is that growth pays for growth, and part of this is one of those areas. In other cases, there's, might be specific permits where you say, well, we have some policies, and we want to not recover the full cost, but those are specific policy decisions. And we can do it either by the program level, a particular fee category, or individual fee, or some sort of cost category, for example, to say, oh, well, we won't recover citywide overhead, for example, as part of the cost. And then, once we have some sort of policy guidance, or some sort of policy, then you can set the fees and what the funding level should be.
Councilmember Wales has a question.
Can you just give me a layman's definition of what a building permit is, what an engineering permit is, and what a planning permit is?
Sure. So, building permit would be is, I submit, I'm going to build a house, I need to submit my plans, and so, that would be what they call plan review. And then, when I'm ready to build the house and my plan's been approved, then I get what's called a building permit, and that basically is to pay for the inspections of the work. For planning, one would, an easier one would be, say, conditional use. Somebody wants to do something that's not necessarily an approved use in that land use zone, and they've asked to get some sort of conditional allowance to be able to do something that's different. And for engineering, somebody wants to do something in the street, and so, they need a right-of-way permit to be able to work in that public street. That work.
Councilmember Pelosi.
So, in column one, I would assume that there are cost-centered, cost-service centers? Where would that fall?
Well, when you say cost-service centers, I'm not.
Oh, cost centers, where you would collect costs, I know, and I'm from, I worked at the Boeing company, and we had cost centers?
Yes, so.
And the accumulation of those costs, and they would pass it on to the next.
Right, so, and I guess I could be correct, the city doesn't budget, their cost centers might be like, planning, okay? As opposed to an individual, you know, specific, more, more specific type of thing. So, it's maybe it's more organizational budgeting as opposed to a cost center in that sense, you know, in other words, for example, in some places, we might go, they might have, planning would be the overall, you know, division or something, but then they might have individual cost centers, so they might have something like, well, like fire's a good one, they might have fire suppression, they might have fire prevention, and something like that. But, but in this case, basically, they're more organizationally oriented.
Thank you. Councilmember Wales.
So, I'm going to build a house. Would I submit the planning, building, and engineering all at one time?
It, it, well, if it's, I don't know.
Just a little house on the street.
So, I get, with a house.
Yeah.
Actually, with all types of development review, there are, you can break it into, there's parts of all three disciplines that can be reflected. So, building a house, a planner's going to look at that, someone from building, and someone from engineering.
Okay.
So, but, but there's kind of a lead proposal. So, for the house, it is, it is the, a building plan reviewer looking at that, but a stormwater engineer's going to make sure that it's, the stormwater management is taken care of the right way. The planner's going to look at it, make sure that it meets setbacks and.
Okay, got it.
Coverage limitations on the property.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions on sort of the methodology? Okay, let's move on. So, one of the key assumptions and analysis that we did, so, again, this all required some, a lot of help from the staff. So, one of the things that we do is, we do sort of two levels of time estimates, we do sort of an annual time, well, how much time do you think on, in a year, do you think you will spend in these various categories? And mostly, there, again, we go sort of from the broader part, we have the indirect, we have the direct services, and then also, between direct services, we often have what we consider to be the fee services and the non-fee services. And so, this is generally to get us sort of an idea about what their average hourly billable rate is, so we take out their vacation, and holidays, and things like that, and we come up with some sort of billable rate. The next part is, is we also then go through these group sessions where we actually take an individual fee, so, we don't do it with the valuation fee, so that's one thing that, when we talk about fees, the building permit that we're talking about, or the building plan review, those fees are not based on the amount of time, they're based on the valuation, and you have a schedule that says, if it's this amount, we multiply it this and we calculate a fee. But for a conditional use permit, it says, we've charged X, okay? And so, that's what we're trying to do, is say, well, how long does it take? And then, we roll up what all the different costs are, and say, okay, we get a fully-loaded rate for a particular person, and we come up with what that cost is. But we do that with each individual fee, and we, again, we sat with the groups, and they were, they went through each of the different permits and said, okay, we think it's involved, and here's how much time they think they spent.
We have another question from Councilmember Pelosi.
That is a, is kind of a statement, but you, you guys will get a real kick out of this one. When I worked for the Boeing company, we had time management teams come in, time management teams, and they would sit right next to you, and you're doing your work, and you'd go to the restroom, click, click on his clipboard, and it was, it was funny.
We didn't do that, but.
No, no, but I can appreciate your time.
Yeah, yeah. Now, in some cases, and in some jurisdictions, we actually have time records, because they are asked to keep track of their time when they work on something, and so. We also used, for the most part, the non-labor costs and revenues are based on the 2017 unaudited actuals. The salary benefit was a little bit more difficult, so we ended up maintaining and using the 2017 budgeted amounts for the individual salary and benefits per person. And as I mentioned, we do two levels of analysis. One is the overall cost recovery by fee category, based on building, planning, and engineering, and it's not, again, by organization, and then we do the individual fee cost of service. So, if you take a look, one of the things we're going to take a look at is, these are sort of the overall cost analysis. So, you can see that in terms of the building permits, or the building function, we identified that basically, $1.3 million was being spent, and of that 1.3, you can see that of those different cost layers, the direct services really cost about $600,000, and then we add the indirect, as well as the different overheads. In terms of the revenues, again, for building, most of the revenue is coming from those valuation permits, not the plumbing or the mechanical, those generally don't generate as much revenue as, for building permits and things like that. The building function really is supported by those valuation permits, based on the construction value and the fee schedule you have. And you can see that it is about 100, 100%, so, from building, from the building standpoint, it looks like everything that you're recovering in 2017, at least, that you had the full cost recovery. One of the things that we're oftentimes not able to show is, you receive the cash up front, and sometimes there are projects that are going to go into the next year, so some of this revenue, although it's recorded as, as in the revenues for this particular year, say, for 2017, some of that cost is eventually going to be spread into next year when the building is being constructed, but they already paid for that, that cost. But anyway, this tells you at least that you're doing pretty well in building, and we've done a number of these studies over the last three years, and so, everybody generally is doing pretty well on the building side, in terms of construction. Yes?
So, can I assume that, in layman's terms, the purple citywide overhead, department overhead, and indirects are all indirect costs?
Yes.
Now, I'd be interested when we get, I didn't have a chance to preview this before, but, to me, that seems like over 50% is overhead and indirects. And I'd like to know, when we get later on, how that compares with the other cities, because I've managed lots of grants, and to have over 50% on overhead, and that seems a lot.
We don't have it for other, all those cities. The studies that we've done, I can tell you that it's not too out of line.
Okay, okay.
For cities. But, we can, we can take a look and see what it's like. But it can vary between 46% and higher.
Yeah.
One of the biggest things is, is, you know, a lot of it depends on your customer service ethic. And so, oftentimes, we have like, plan reviewers, in many cities, they might have, they spend a lot of time sort of helping, you know, somebody calls, and they say, well, I'd really like, I'm thinking about doing this, can I talk to somebody? And they talk to a plan reviewer, and the plan reviewer has to spend time, sort of saying, well, you would need this, do this, do this. Well, that's not, we'd call that unbillable time, because there's no permit submitted yet, so. So, in other places, other places, they might say, well, you know, you know, have your architect, call your architect, and, and, you know, they'll tell you what you need to do and all the things. But, again, there are things like that, that's in that, in what I call indirect support category.
One of the strengths that I think that we have is that the gals and guys that are at the counters, they provide really good technical assistance that really isn't overhead or whatever, because of the specific nature and quality of their responses.
And some of that indirect includes that public information counter-support, that's why we call it indirect support.
Councilmember Pelosi has a question.
Fifty percent does seem kind of high. And as an example, King County, I worked on a committee where we contract for their services, and they charge 35% overhead. So, that's a, and we thought that was high.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't say why, how they come up with the numbers, it seems, you know, but there are different.
But I guess, one thing I would add, in hearing how that's described, there's a big difference between just administrative overhead, you know, where it's us maintaining computer systems and file systems, and, you know, those types of supportive efforts. What, like, that additional customer service interaction, I mean, the permit technicians and the plan reviewers spent a substantial amount of time doing work that has, that relates to no permit activity, informing customers and being out in the community, working with individuals and groups, that there's, there's not a revenue stream coming in for that.
And so, again, a lot of those costs are in that indirect support area. The true, I guess, in terms of administrative overhead, is the citywide, as well as the department overhead, those are supervisors, those are, you know, HR functions, financial functions, things like that. So, if you look at planning, planning is, again, very, again, the ratios are fairly close in terms of 48%. Again, it's about 547,000 was the total cost, but the revenue that was received was only 94,000, 95,000, so that's like a 17% cost recovery level for all those different planning permits. And so, now, is that unusual? Normally, when we do this, for most cities that haven't done this for quite a while, it can vary. Some of the other cities that we've done have been down to 17, 19%, others have been in the, say, mid-30s, and some that actually are, have requirements, and their policy is to try and get 100%, we've had those that are as high as 71%. Another area's been about 80% in terms of the cost recovery for planning. So, planning is, this is not unusual to see this, again, that we see for, for planning. And there are a number of different reasons for that, it just depends on some of the policies, and we can talk about that as I get into some of the policy considerations.
Now, Paul, have you been able to aggregate, aggregate the data between the building permits, the engineering, and the, the other one, to come up with an aggregated amount that is generally indirects and directs?
Yeah, in total, between the three groups.
I'll bring them together, aggregate them.
I mean, we could look at that, kind of be the sum of these three charges seen here.
Except for one is a million, another's a million, and one's a half million, I'd have to do some math that only an analyst can do.
Yeah. So, I mean, we have the ability to do that. Now, you have to remember what the law says, and the law says, basically, that you can charge reasonable fees to do processing and other things, and that's why there are areas, for example, in planning, long-range planning costs are not included as part of this, because that's, you know, when you're talking about development permits, they can only recover some sort of their fees.
Otherwise, it's taxation, yeah.
Just a word for our council, please wait to be recognized before you start asking questions, please. Thank you.
Are there anything else on the, on the planning permits? All right, so, engineering is very similar, it's a little bit higher, it's twice as high, technically, it's 34% cost recovery. Now, the biggest difference here is that the engineering permits, they're, when you look at the cost, and this goes back to what you were talking about earlier, is, you know, their direct time is close to 70%, which is much higher than what you saw for building and planning, so. Oh, sorry. So, again, there's about a million dollars' worth of time spent and, and costs associated with that, and again, the revenues were about 355,000. So, just to give you, so that gives you sort of an overview in each category, and the next slide really is, as I mentioned before, we do these as an individual fee, too. So, you can look at appeal fees, and your current fee is $110, but when you actually determine how much time it takes to go through an appeal process, and how much staff time, it actually costs you about $4,800. Boundary line reviews would be roughly, you charge 534, but again, the cost is about $2,800. So, you can see why the planning fees were not actually recovering all their cost. There are some other ones here where you can see, in terms of the environmental reviews, some of these plats, and some of the grade and fillings, rightaways, you can see that there's some, some differences, but these are just sort of a sample of the, of the fees that are done. We tried to sort of pick in a, a group that sort of would give you sort of some examples of how, how the fees were, and what the different cost recovery levels were. So, we have this for each individual fee that we worked on, and as part of the report, those things will be in there. Again, these are all fixed fees, they're not the building valuation fees, so. So, in turn of, in terms of taking a look at sort of how does the city stand, we also did this building fees survey of some of those other jurisdictions we talked about, Puyallup, Kent, Renton, some of the other areas. I'll let Paul talk about those.
Sure, so like Peter said, in addition to an overall cost of service analysis, as well as a cost of service analysis on an individual fee level, we conducted a fee survey with these five local jurisdictions to see what they're currently charging, and we can compare those fees to what Auburn's currently charging. I first want to take you through the building permits and plan review fees, and it's worth noting, when you look at some of these fees, it can be very difficult to compare them sometimes, but in the case of the building permits and the plan review fees, they are directly comparable, because they're charged on the same basis. And that basis is, based on the project valuation, you look at the valuation table, and it tells you how much the building permit should be, and how much a plan review permit should be. The, now, we worked with the city staff to calculate an average valuation for a number of different projects, and we'll walk through a couple tonight. The overall takeaway, before I begin, the overall takeaway on the building permit and plan review fees, is that at higher project valuation, Auburn charges the most of the group, just being just above Kent and Federal Way. However, at lower project valuations, Auburn is the third highest, being just below Kent and Federal Way. So, in this slide right here, we're showing two examples of single-family projects, those being a new single-family home valued at $300,000, and a single-family alteration valued at $20,000. In both these instances, because the valuations are at the lower level, Auburn ranks third among the group, being just below Kent and Federal Way. Now, we look at two examples of commercial projects, those being a new commercial project valued at 1.1 million, and a commercial tenant improvement valued around $175,000. You can see at that higher valuation level above $1 million, Auburn ranks highest among the five. However, at that lower valuation, at $175,000, Auburn is the third highest, being just below Kent and Federal Way. You can also take a look at a new multifamily project valued at around $2.1 million. And again, since this is a higher project valuation, Auburn ranks highest among those five other jurisdiction jurisdictions, being just above Kent and Federal Way.
Sorry. Councilmember Wales.
A lot of these appear to me to be fairly close. What do you see to be a significant difference? You know, what?
Yeah, it's hard to say, I mean, I guess that's kind of in the eyes of, you know, whoever's undertaking the project. Maybe above $1,000 or $2,000, you start to.
About a thousand dollars threshold?
Yeah.
Would be significant?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Bob.
So, in addition to, you know, looking at these valuation-based permits, you know, we also looked at all the other permits and how they compare across the five jurisdictions. And like I mentioned before, it can be very difficult to compare some of these fees, because they're charged on different bases. For instance, you know, one jurisdiction could charge on evaluation, or another's charging an hourly rate, and another jurisdiction's charging a flat fee. So, what we're showing here are four examples where fees are directly comparable across all the jurisdictions. We can start with the first one, the conditional use permit. Auburn currently charges just above $1,000, a flat fee. Compared to the other five jurisdictions, this is the second lowest of the group. However, there are some jurisdictions that do charge based on the square footage, the area of, that the conditional use would impact. So, at those larger, if it was a larger area project, or for a permit, Auburn would actually have the lowest fee of the group.
Councilmember Pelosi has a question.
Yeah, follow-up there. On the conditional use permit, it's $1,030, is that covering all of Auburn's costs?
So, is that the cost of service?
Yeah.
Is that the current fee?
That's the current fee.
That's the current fee.
So, that, I believe not. I don't know if we showed it on the slide before.
Yes, we did for residential, so. So, if you went, if you went back to page nine. a thousand thirty, but the cost of service is four thousand. So if you were four thousand, you'd be mostly being the highest again, other than Kent and Federal Way.
So we're not recovering all of our internal costs?
Yes, and that goes back, because that's a planning permit, and if you remember, when we looked at that overall planning permit, you were about seventeen percent cost recovery.
Thank you.
So jumping ahead to the two fees in the middle, a preliminary plat and final plat on a subdivision, when looking at the comparison, Auburn was right in the middle of the jurisdiction studied, but it was worth noting that it's much, the current fee is much less than what Kent, Renton, and Federal Way are currently charging in the, you know, in some instances, thousands and thousands of dollars less than what that current charge is.
And if you went back to the preliminary plats, where it says three thousand ninety, the cost of service of that is like eleven thousand seven hundred. So again, you'd be back up there with Kent and Renton.
So that last fee on this list up here is an example of an engineering fee. It's a right-of-way street closure, and the current fee right now is ninety dollars, and that is the lowest of the group.
So that's got to be bumped up.
Potentially.
Yeah. Yeah, so again, when we look back, the cost of service for that particular fee is eight hundred and seventy dollars.
So with that, I'd like to turn it back over to Peter Moy to present his presentation.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so the big question then becomes, what are these key policy, cost recovery policy considerations? And in general, what we like to think about is that for things that what we would consider private, total private benefit, which is maybe like building a house, we would say, well, that should be, that's all private benefit, so we should recover a hundred percent. Where we're talking about something less than that, let's say even a conditional use permit, where there's some public benefit through that regulation, it could be something less than a hundred percent. And so there are really a couple of different questions that we would ask and talk about. Is it feasible to set the fees at the full cost recovery level? Will increasing fees result in compliance or public safety problems? Can the market bear the fee increases? Does the public benefit from the permitting process? Do adjustments in the fees adversely affect other city goals? And are there feasible process changes that might bring cost into better balance with revenues? Now, when we talk about planning fees especially, one of the things that we often see where there's some clear decision not to charge the full cost is like appeals. So you saw that appeals, you know, we charge, I think, a hundred and ten dollars, but, you know, it really takes the staff and city staff, the cost of that's about forty-seven hundred dollars. But would you want to set that fee that high, which might discourage people from appealing, or those that don't have enough resources to be able to appeal wouldn't have that? So there would be a policy decision to say, okay, we're not going to charge that amount. Maybe it could be higher, there's others that charge higher than a hundred and ten, but something that you would feel that's more reasonable, which also means then that the general fund is actually picking up that portion of the cost. So anytime you're talking about these fees, you're saying, okay, if we don't fully fund the cost of the service, or fully charge the cost of service, then somebody else has to make up the difference, and that will come basically from the general fund, which today you do already. So that, you know, there is, now whether that's a set policy, that's something different, but that's one consideration. The other might be, you might have other goals like a certain kind of economic development goals. So, you know, if we charge higher fees, is that going to affect your policies on that? Because if you're going to have economic development, then oftentimes, if you're talking retail and things, then you're going to get more sales taxes and other things like that, maybe more property taxes. Those are things that you all have to sort of give some thought to in terms of whether or not you should go full cost recovery or not. So to sort of wrap up in terms of the key policy questions, and we'll be working with the staff on this, you know, should the city's cost recovery goal be at full cost recovery? And we can do it, you know, we would probably take a look and say, well, what should we do for building? What should we do for planning overall? What should we do for engineering? One of the things that we want to make sure that we do, do whatever decisions we make, when we talk about revenue, we want to make sure that the most common permits are, if we have to generate more revenue, that's where we want to make sure we make changes in the fees and not a particular permit where we only have, we only get one a year, and if we're not recovering our costs, it's not really going to affect our revenue or our cost basis very much. But for those things that are fairly common, we want to make sure that we're helping you. Whatever cost recovery are, is, let's say if it's, you know, seventeen, you've gone from seventeen to, say, fifty percent in planning, we want to make sure that to get to that fifty percent, we're raising the fees that will generate the appropriate revenue. So if it's not at full cost recovery, then again, we've got to figure out what are the desired cost recovery goals. And again, we would still tend to do it by grouping. So next steps, what are we planning on doing? Well, if there's any policy guidance that we get, we will start looking at that. We'll, I think, believe the staff will start reviewing the individual fees. We've got a whole list, though. We'll be sending them a draft report and determining the potential impacts of any fee changes. The staff will then come back, develop recommended cost recovery policies that are consistent with whatever proposed policies come up, and then those things will be presented to you later on. I'm not sure exactly when, but they might be part of the next budget or something else like that, so I'm not sure.
I guess this looks like it could be a prelude to some rate adjustments coming forward to the council, right?
Policy questions first, I think, just in terms of the recovery, yeah.
Councilmember Wales.
I liked the comment that you made regarding who's going to benefit from the actual construction. Is this going to be a private home where all of it happens there is going to benefit the homeowner, or is this going to benefit the neighborhood and so on and so forth? That leads into what I would like to see us do as we look at this from a policy point of view, in that some of our home structures are kind of aging, and we need a lot of remodeling, that we look at some of the remodeling provisions so that we can encourage the repurposing of not only our homes, but some of our businesses to help stimulate that.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes, and with respect to the policy discussion, what I would like to see is, you know, if there's a recommendation one way or the other, as we move forward with the policy discussion, help us understand the pluses and minuses of any sort of movement on these fees. What, who are the winners, who are the losers, so that we can take a look at that.
Rebecca.
So just as a reminder, I think six of the seven of you filled out an online survey for questions for the upcoming budget retreat, and this will be part of that discussion as far as, do you want to raise revenues? If so, what are you willing to do to raise revenues? If not, what services are you willing to cut to maintain without increasing revenues? So just keep all this in mind for the retreat, that this will most likely be part of your discussion.
Councilmember Wales.
I forgot, but I appreciate that additional information.
Councilmember Holman.
In keeping with the policy questions, I'm pretty much a firm believer in growth pays for growth philosophy, with the caveat that a certain amount of that cost can be reduced as economic development incentive for new growth that benefits, say, employment opportunities, desirable projects in Auburn. So for instance, you see new single-family home, that should move, in my opinion, closer to the full recovery because it's a new home, new people, new tax, new demand on services in our city. Whereas an alteration is an existing family already here, I can see the city bearing more of that if you look at it as a continuum of cost recovery, new having a higher recovery rate than alteration. And the same over on the commercial side. New commercial construction building toward, closer to the full recovery, tenant improvement of commercial structures, you can see the city helping that. Now then, rather than having full recovery on new commercial on a hundred percent, again, perhaps we want to use that little bit of wiggle room we could leave ourselves for commercial inducement, for inducement of commercial businesses coming in to the city that keep with the goals of this council of improving middle-class job opportunities in Auburn. And that, about it for me.
Councilmember Pelosi.
Going with the mayor in our retreat, I'd like to see us talk about strategy. Someone will say, one of the councilmen will say, I want to see those prices go sky-high. I want to get our cost back. And the mayor may say, no, we got this deal here, and maybe that might taint it a little bit, so we should reconsider raising those. So it's all strategy, and this is where I think staff comes in as well. I mean, we need, we'll need recommendations from staff, no question about it, because you all know a lot of the strategies better than we do.
Councilmember Wales.
In some regards, John, I disagree with what you're saying, or I'd like to fine-tune it just a hair. We are in a crisis of affordable housing, and up where I live on the whatever hill, they're putting in beautiful homes that some entry-level families cannot afford. So I think that whatever our average home is, if we've got a builder that's building smaller and something that entry-level people are more likely to be able to afford, I think that that's where we need to kind of cut a break to help depress those costs so that people can get their first home. And then maybe the upper-level homes, that's full cost recovery, but there are people out there that just can't get into homes, and a thousand dollars or five thousand dollars really makes a big difference.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Next, we have a BIA update.
Deputy Mayor, Mayor of the Council, Doug Wayne, Admin Department Economic Development Manager. We're here to give a approximate ninety-day update from back in November when there was an ordinance that came before you for a redo on the ordinance for the business improvement area, and you asked for the board to come back and give an update and answer a couple of questions, and they're here. So I'd like to introduce Chairman DeQuatro and Vice Chair Howard, and they're going to present for you.
Good evening. One of the first things, we want to address the new business BIA fees. There was a question about new businesses, if they would get a tax, I mean, a break as far as the fee goes. What we all decided was, and most of us had already done this when we started our business, was get a prorated. If they started in January, they would get paid for the full year. If they started in December, they would pay just for a full, for a month, or just prorate the year, that would give them a break to get them started. And then other issues that came up, we'll have, we have the bullet points here, we'll go through them, and then at the end, if you guys have any questions, or as we go along, if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them, and Bill's going to take over from here.
Thanks, Johnny. So the BIA came up with some additional items that we wanted to try to fund. We may have already previously told you that our funding is, most of it's going to the ADA to provide functions downtown, to bring people downtown, which they have already had one function just recently. They didn't have much time to put it together, they didn't have much funding because the ADA hasn't elected their officers, so they haven't been able to spend money, but they did have a function just last month for, for Mardi Gras, or I guess it was this month. We haven't checked.
I'd like to point out that your ADA is the Auburn Downtown Association.
That's correct.
Correct. Not the American Disabilities Act, right?
No, is there a bit of confusion on that? So yes, and so we, and when we, when we came up with a method to distribute the money, what we had decided was that we would give them enough money this year, they have a surplus because it hasn't been active for a couple of years, and they had a surplus of money. And then we also gave some to the marketing department to help promote downtown, and then left some in reserve so that we could bolster them again next year. But we have kind of a pretty, pretty long list of items that we uncovered as we were going through this process that, that we'd like to see the city help us with, although we're willing to put some of the BIA money into it. We don't have enough to do this, and we want to provide as much as possible to the ADA to, to bring as many people downtown, to see our new beautiful downtown, and to participate in it as possible. So some of the things that we identified were additional security lighting, and when we talk about the BIA, we're talking not just Main Street, we want to encompass the entire BIA. And there's a lot of ancillary streets that we don't focus on, that have businesses on them, and they feel left out, but they're paying into it. So what we'd like to see is that we expand everything that we already do that's just on Main Street to all of those areas. We have some issues downtown that some of the, the way, way we do garbage now is people build a big barrier thing, and they put the dumpsters inside there, and of course, a lot of illegal activity goes on inside those things. And what we'd like to consider is maybe some way where in at least that core area, maybe there's a nightly garbage pickup, and we get rid of those deals.
Councilmember Trial Manual has a question.
Could we have kind of like a layout of the area that, you know, just like you said, there's a corridor of places that don't have the lighting? Is there any way that we could get a layout so we know exactly what are the areas that you're talking about?
Yes, we have a map of that.
Yeah, and I believe it is attached to your ordinance that you voted on in November six. But I'll get that map.
It would be nice to have it here so we can...
So we do have hanging planners that we hang up on Main Street, but again, they don't, was there another question?
Yeah. Another question.
Follow-up, Councilmember Pelosi. Bill, on the security lighting, I would like to see, and I think it would be helpful for all of us, where you want security lighting, identify the area.
So we're in the process. Deputy Chief Pearson is working with me. We generated some maps that show where we have existing lighting downtown that's currently, you know, in operation, and we have a couple of officers, I believe Chief helped me out on that one, that have gone through suburban training, that would, they're going to be going out and doing a survey within the BIA and identifying dark spots where maybe a light could go here, a light could go there, do we have a power pole there that we could put it on inexpensively? So yes, we're working with PD to get that information for the BIA.
Councilmember Trial Manual.
On the same note, with the trash, I know that the rainbow, you guys got it fenced off and stuff. It would be nice also to know which businesses you're talking about having, pick up the garbage and everything, is there anybody that does the same thing as we've done to you, but people have gotten in yours, haven't they?
Yeah, I mean, for us in our area, I keep it under lock and key, because when I wasn't, everybody was using trash, and then we were finding people living in there, and so I And so I keep it under lock and key, and still they, sometimes will pull down the boards and go around and get in. So, and part of it is because it's a secure area, semi-secure. They're out of everybody's eyesight. They can do what they want inside there, and that's why we're thinking of if a nightly pickup, so we don't have these closed-off areas to where illegal activity could happen.
Councilmember Wales.
I think that that's a real exciting idea. I know that we are getting ready in the next year so we can renegotiate our garbage contract. And the problems that you're alluding to here in the downtown, you can see it at Rite Aid, where they break into the large garbage cans, and you can see it at Starbucks, and you can also see it at some of our elementary schools. And so it would be nice to look at not only this problem that's unique here, but other applications, and maybe do some things citywide to make this look a lot tidier. It's a good idea.
In addition to the, to just the security issue of it, in a lot of those places, we might be able to pick up some more parking, which is probably a core to our whole problem that we have here. But we have to have people to be able to come downtown and park somewhere, and so we were looking at those ideas. So you'd be talking about in between Safeway and the Main Street side, you know, where those, those are at. That might be a place where we could pick some up, and I'm not sure there's any on the other side. Those are mostly just garbage cans hanging out there, but basically that's where we were talking about doing that. The planters, we do planters, but we do them on Main Street, and we don't do them anywhere else. And so you have ratepayers, they're in all those other areas, and they're, you know, offended by the fact that we're not planting everywhere.
Councilmember Wales.
I thought the city did the, is Daryl here? I thought the city did the.
They do. They do. They do. And, but right now, you guys, the city is only doing the Main Street. And the backside of, by where Safeway is, they do the backside there. And, but again, a lot of our members are on side streets, and, and they would like to get the same consideration, and they've asked us to bring that to your attention.
We're not really saying we'll pay for all of these. So if you thought we were, we're not.
We're, we're, we're going to do our best to.
We're asking you, we're just telling you what our wish list is. We want to spend most of our money where it was supposed to go, which is the Auburn Downtown Association, so that they can provide for the downtown business core. So lighting in the trees, we want, overall, you're going to notice a theme in here. We want to light up downtown a little bit more.
Are there any trees?
You know, like the Christmas tree lighting, but the white ones that you leave them up all the time. They do that in lots of places. Just light up everything and make it a little bit, it's a security issue. You have, some of the business owners talked about, they had clients that wouldn't come down here once it got even remotely close to dark, or was going to be dark before they left. So we want to change that atmosphere and, and light it. That, that's our wish. We're willing to help. We have a little bit of a surplus, but, but what we overall would want is, we need help from your, some of your departments, utilities department, the parks department. We need to, we need to know what they can help us with, and what we need to do. And we want access to them to be able to, to find out solutions for these problems.
Councilmember Troutmanial.
You're talking about lighting across the streets. What are, what are you actually talking about there?
Well, at the B Street Plaza, once we did that at B Street Plaza, we took the lights across the plaza, and it lit up the whole plaza, and it made it a lot more attractive to people coming downtown. And with all the lighting, it deterred illegal activity. People didn't like to be in the limelight, and so they would get away from there, which in turn brought people in. Of course, it's, it's died down since the Heritage Fire, but if we could do something like that, what we were talking about, down Main Street and down the side corridors across the streets, just to open up, make it so when someone that is at the end of the street, they want to walk down the street and down the sides to see what we have to offer.
Councilmember DeCorsie.
So looking at lighting, you know, our facade improvement program does a great thing of improving downtown and surrounding areas, and we see a lot of paint improvements and such. I remember during the presentation we had on that, that there was an example of the city with an existing shoe store, that people knew it was a shoe store because they couldn't see through the windows or not enough lighting. And they showed us the difference between not having it and having it, and automatically the shoe stores started doing a lot more business because people were attracted to it. So my question basically is, are we, do we have enough lighting to attract people into our stores and our retail outlets, or would that be something we should look at as well?
No, that's a good idea, and I, we would certainly support that.
And that's for the individual business, looking at how do they make the front of their store more attractive so that the, you know, a shopper can actually visualize what they are, understand what they are. And that's part of the basis to the facade grant program. I think we have seven applications in process right now that we're working with in that area of fresh paint, a blade sign that can be read from a 90-degree angle, lighting, awnings. So we have a number of small projects this year that we're working on with businesses at this point in time to do exactly what you're talking about. A lot of the work that, and education that the planning department went through a couple of years ago, when we had a designer come up, I believe, out of Vancouver. They spent a lot of time with the small businesses, it kind of took last year for it to take hold, and now we're seeing the applications come in to do a lot of those small, I'll call it lipstick-type project to identify and create a brand for the front of their store. So we're seeing a lot of that take hold now.
Councilmember Wales.
Back to the lighting in the trees. Do we have any trees on Auburn, on Main Street? I, you know, maybe that's something we want to look at, is putting some trees, because you look at the newer developments, the strip malls and some of the newer cities, and they've got their trees and their lights, and it's that greenery, even though it does dump leaves, really is very, very inviting. So you might want to look at some trees.
And one of the components that, some of this stuff from the lighting has come out of, planning came in and did a really good, excuse me, briefing with the BIA board last fall on the plan that had been designed for Main Street a couple of years ago, with how could things be redone, and that had a fairly high price tag if you were going to do, implement the whole plan. But there were a lot of small things that could maybe be done. These items that they're presenting to you really is the wish list that's come out of the last few months of meetings, where their real heavy-duty work was getting the ordinance redone and getting that finished in November, and now they're getting into this, this list. So I think that there's a number of things that could be done that are inexpensive, if it fits with the overall plan that you would approve, and for Main Street. That might be short-term fixes to get that lighting out there and different ideas, so yeah.
But don't just focus on Main Street.
No.
Make the ratepayers unhappy.
That's right.
Go ahead.
You're talking about Christmas decorations. So are you looking into getting bigger decorations, or what is your idea on that?
On that, we were, we were talking as a group to look into purchasing some on our budget. What we would need is some help getting them up and maintaining them while they're up, and getting some bigger ones to where it's noticeable from.
Looks more like Christmas.
Yeah.
Councilmember Wales.
See, I would rather spend the money on a tree that we have lights in, that we can change the color of the lights depending on the season, and then have decorations where we have to decide on storage, putting them up and down. So I'd like to see us look at a combination so that we keep the indirects down and we get the direct visual. I mean, we could do blue for the Fourth of July and red, red and green Christmas. We could do our purple Yolanda for domestic violence. We could do a lot with the lights in the trees, so it would be kind of slow one tree at a time.
Well, there are some trees across the street from Nelson's, next to the bank. There's some in your parking lot on B Street. I mean, there are some street.
That we could build on.
Now, what I don't know is if there's any power to light up those lights, but that kind of brings us to an issue just a little bit further down here. And so we had the Mardi Gras, but what we end up with is we don't have enough locations along Main Street where we have adequate power and water and things to, to host those deals outside. And so we'd want to make sure that maybe we got it at those places. I think there is power at the parking that's on B Street.
On the B Street.
The parking lot that the city owns, but there's no water there. There's no water access for the vendors if we were to have something. And we just thought that in, in any planning going on in the future, and if there can be anything done, you know, in some of the other places that are located just off of Main Street or on Main Street to help with that, that that would help us attract vendors. The ADA's been tasked with providing a function once a month. You know, they're going to build up to that, but to do that and to do all that planning, they kind of need infrastructure to make it happen. A lot of these things, we want to be outside, so move people around the core of downtown so they can see the businesses and hopefully buy from them. There's, there's a need for some ancillary things to make that happen, like bleachers or platforms or even tents, things that, you know, have to go out and be purchased or bought or rent to, you know, to make these things. A lot of planning goes in that. We thought maybe if the Parks Department already had them, with the help of the city and the help of the BIA to purchase those things, and then they were available for these constantly, that that would be very helpful for us also. And then parking. So a lot of the downtown business owners felt like they needed some advocacy for their employees to get preferential treatment, to get the permits for those parkings that have dedicated spaces. It doesn't do them any good to just have a permit and then still have to park so far away from their businesses, especially when they're arriving at hours where it's dark, and we haven't put up the lighting yet, and we haven't done any of those things.
Did you have a question?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Trouble real quick here, but, so better maintenance on existing streetlights. So what do we, what's our situation?
Apparently there, and I haven't seen any of them, but there were some complaints that there's some lights that are maybe out.
Yeah, it just, from several of our members, would, they would come to us and, and talk to us about lighting, that, the existing lighting that takes forever to get them back up and running. And Doug had explained that there is a process for them to report it, but I'm not sure everybody knows how to report those burned-out light bulbs. And so we need a better, better way for them to report it, because a lot of them don't know it. And then the other thing is to maybe just better maintenance and even for police, is they're riding around on their bikes, or they, whatever they notice, if there's a way for them to just fill out a little form and send it off to the maintenance department that says, "We noticed that this is, this is burned down on B Street," or whatever.
Councilmember Troutmanial, did you have a question?
Yes, I see here you have restrooms. What is your dream, and where do you want this extra restroom?
Who's going to clean it?
Yeah.
Well, I guess if we had, what we were thinking is, if we had some set areas, like if you were going to do this, if we were going to have outdoor functions where one of the centerpieces was going to be that parking that you have on B Street, or perhaps once we solve the issue with the Heritage Building, and we can do something with B Street Plaza, that perhaps there ought to be some, some restrooms. But obviously, you're not going to have them open all the time, I would think.
Just an example, again, Sumner has, for all their functions downtown, they have, and that's something what we're asking for is the power, the water. So everything can be in one area and get people moving around. But when they have large functions, they open up their bathrooms that they have built downtown, and they open those up for the public. And that is a huge help to get people downtown. When we talked to the Parks Department and asked them what to draw to the Parks Department was that all these functions were going to, to our park, these were the issues that they said. They, they had the power that Auburn didn't have downtown. They had the water, they had the restrooms, and just the main things you need to put on functions, they had those facilities. We don't have them in a downtown corridor.
So are, are you planning on still hosting all of your activities at the B, the area, at the, at that little plaza there? Or are you planning on moving it elsewhere?
For us, that's part of the ADA on what they want to plan. They're the, the ADA, the Auburn Downtown Association is the one, they will come up with all the functions and they will bring, bring it to us, and we're their funding, we're part of their funding. And, and when they bring that to us, we will go over all the pros and cons on it, and if it's a good idea, we will help them fund it. So it's up to the ADA, once they get their board members in place, on what kind of functions they want to do downtown. With the new members and the new board that's coming, coming aboard there, they have a lot of good ideas, but nothing has been brought to us in concrete for us to say, "We'll pay for that."
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Wales.
I'm glad you brought up the restrooms, because when I'm at the senior center, many times, some of the seniors who walk to and from want a restroom down here. And recently, I was in Enamclaw, where they have, off the Main Street, they have a little park, and they have restaurant, restrooms that they open up during their events. Yeah, so I, I'm glad to see that.
Councilmember Pelosi, my apologies.
First thing, guys, thank you very much for coming today. Thank you for volunteering on the BIA. It's very important.
Uh-oh. Sorry.
Senior moment.
Good sentiments. We do have one party can comment if there's no more questions. So when, there's a lot of private donation that went into that last function that the ADA put on, partially because the money wasn't there, but, but mostly because there are businesses in town, and, and some of them are not even in the BIA area, that wanted to step up and make sure that it went off well, and that would bring people downtown so they could see our community. So there is private money available to help fund these. Your, your business owners in town, multi-generational businesses, will get behind this, and we just need the city to get behind it, too.
Councilmember Pelosi.
Okay, I'm back. We have two ways that you, you can report to Maintenance and Operations. Lights out, I do it all the time. In fact, I did it up on Lee Hill last week. Within 24 hours, light. So there shouldn't be any excuse. We need people out in the community to help, you know? So there is a YourGov app, YourGov, and then there's a, an Auburn app. Very easy to use. So how do we get that out to the?
We have started a newsletter now that'll be going out to the 200 businesses within the business improvement area, which is a line of communication that they've asked to be started. That will go out, that will update them on that in minutes of the upcoming meetings or previous meetings and up, you know, that type of thing. So that's going to be going out to all 200 businesses in the BIA. And I want to, there's been a lot of comment about the ADA tonight, just again to remind that currently under the, the corporate rules for the ADA is that to be involved with the ADA, they have to be a BIA ratepayer. And we have three BIA ratepayers sitting in the audience that are all downtown businesses that are currently involved at the level of activity for the, that the ADA is charged with doing. You know, obviously, the committee of ratepayers for the BIA is involved in this bigger idea, bigger picture list of items that they're looking at to have an impact on all 200 businesses downtown. So there's a lot of fresh involvement with the businesses, and they're working together. So there's a lot of fresh involvement with the businesses and they're working together.
Counselmember Brown.
I just want to say, somebody mentioned Mardi Gras a little earlier. I would just, there, you know, some people develop bad reputations in the public and I was seeing at one of the functions and it was a great time and I behaved myself so.
You get that free entertainment at your house.
My wife ended up with him later, so.
Any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I will move on to Resolution Number 5350.
So Doug Ling with Department of Administration Economic Development Division and Tourism Board. We have an ordinance in front of you for discussion and presentation for the recommendations by the Lodging Tax Advisory Board for grants going out to functions throughout the year. Answer any questions for you and ask this to be moved forward to your next council meeting for adoption. There were four applications for grants that came into the LTAC Board. Veterans Day Parade, $3,500, Pet Palooza, $3,500, Tough Mudder, which is an event that's run, done here annually in the fall. Last year, that event brought in 9,172 attendees. Our hotels were 100% full. It was a great event and we get a lot of national and international exposure from it. And then the Seattle Parrot Expo, it was a winner. We had, people went down for two or three days and they've rented out the entire event center and let's go facility for this fall's event. And we have parrot experts come in from all over the world for this event. And so that was for $2,000. And so our total grants this year that the LTAC Board is recommending is $16,500. And those are funds paid out of the room tax revenues that we've taken. You have any questions?
Counselmember Pelosi.
Look at your Exhibit A. There's a type one.
Uh-oh.
Very top, line two, Tough Mudder, Inc. That should be 5,000 rather than 3,500. Correct?
7,500.
Oh, 7,500, you're right, excuse me.
Stolen one under.
No, it's under.
No, 7,500 to grant Tough Mudder, comma, 3,500 to Auburn Parks for Pet Palooza.
It's 5,000 for Pet Palooza.
No, it's 3,500.
The recommendations, Bill, not the requests.
Yeah, they had requested 5.
The amount requested was 5,000.
Yeah, and the LTAC granted.
So what's bold printed out in the blocks here is what they're going to get.
16,500.
That's it, okay.
Nice.
Thank you for clarification.
So this is for the entire 2018?
Yes.
Nothing for Hops and Crops or any of those others?
They didn't apply.
They didn't apply. Next one, it's only four applied.
Yeah, all, these are the four that applied.
Okay.
And it was advertised in the Seattle Times and for a number of weeks and we had it open, I believe, application process was open for six weeks.
And we'll see this at the next council meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I will turn the meeting over to our Public Works Chair.
Want to take a break? Everybody want to take a break? Ten minute break?
I turned them off.
Oh, okay.
No, there was no presence, no power point with the last two, so.
Great job back there, Sean.
Yeah. I hurt my back.
You're making a lot of noise, which is.
Yeah, it hurt my back and so I was standing up back there. Well, I have broken bones in my back and I didn't have to open the dog crate, you know. But I keep standing up.
I did that, picking my son out of the backseat of the car one year and I just, out of nowhere, bing!
So I'm back there standing up doing a little stretch and I'm like, "Let's hope Jason's making sure he's only videotaping over there." I'm back there doing stretches.
Just stand up, just take your keyboard with you.
I'm just saying, you guys ain't saying anything. Nothing was said when I was standing. That's why we record it.
That's a good thing.
In case I miss something.
You and Danny do a great job, I'll tell you.
Thank you.
So, so far, so good.
Jeff treated you okay?
Yeah. Yeah, we need to hire some more with that thing.
I was going to ask you, how's your daughter doing? She's, my daughter, I think she's doing really good, yeah. Yeah, so she's, just having fun, she just loves it there. We just, we just have the conversation of, "So, I don't have as many dollars. How many dollars do we need?" And so I just get the, she's going to have to live off campus here too. You're not supposed to, but she's going to. Well, she's got a scholarship. Yeah, so that's, that's part of the plan. Yeah. Yes. Yeah. Let's be cool about it. Yeah. Who else? I'm on to try to make some money, notice they're making me flush. I am, I am. That's why we're here. He can, he can. So. So how's your dad doing? Good, good. Well, there's actually a paper on. It's not surgery, it's not surgery at all. Yeah, that's, that's. Since I, since I. Just auto four. Just auto four. Forty-five. Forty-seven. Somebody's trying. This time you have. P E O star. Getting back on the horse. Doing it slower. During summer. South Seattle, you better probably, two years ago. So. I was worried about the cows. They value fishing. I went home for a little bit, got a little, well, guys, I'm like $10,000 a day. There are. You know what, that's, that's just nature. That's large. The, uh. I think it exists. Caught up on your city. Did you get lagged? A week ago. Well, you know, the world, yes, we can. Well, congratulations.
Well, I can only speak for me. Good, good. This day is just trying to stay warm.
Look at you. Congratulations.
It's kind of, I was not sure whether that, that girl. It's cold, but it's, you know, it could be a little warmer in terms of.
We've been, we've been, you all of a sudden go to 20 and 28. I was out today. And it was like 55. It was wonderful. And no wind yesterday. Wind.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, I think, what adds to it is that wind chill factor.
Well, I'm not very sure. I believe if you figure it out, I'd like to.
Yeah.
Well, I think we're all here, so let's reconvene. And with that, I will turn the meeting over to Councilmember Decorsi, who will conduct Public Works and Community Development focus area.
All right, we're going to start with item number 4A, Ordinance Number 6675. Jeff Dixon.
Yes, thank you. Mayor, Deputy Mayor and City Council, I'm Jeff Dixon, Planning Services Manager for the Community Development and Public Works Division of the city. Under consideration this evening is the city-initiated zoning map amendment, which is in follow-up to and builds upon work the council has already done in changes to the annual comprehensive plan amendments. And specifically, the request tonight is to change the zoning district classification of five parcels that are in two locations in the city. And this is reflected in Ordinance 6675 and it goes by file number REZ180001. And I apologize, the references to the two different locations are in reverse to the way they're presented in the staff report tonight. So if you can bear with me on that change. The first location is a point nine acre city-owned park parcel and it's requested to change from the current zoning classification of R20 residential, 20 units to the acre, to the city's I institutional classification. And this is in response to the city's recent ownership of this developed park. This is a site on Lee Hill. It's located on the south side of Southeast 310th Street and west of 124th Avenue. And this change is proposed to bring it in alignment with the city's comprehensive plan designation for the same property and also to bring it in and make it consistent with the zoning designations that are applied to other active Parks Department-owned sites. The second location is for privately owned and previously developed sites and change the designation from DUC Downtown Commercial to the M1 Light Industrial zoning classification. And that is being requested to bring it more compatible with the development status of these properties. These four parcels are located on the east side of C Street Northwest between West Main Street and Third Street Northwest. And I'll show you a map of these locations in just a moment. These sites include the former Dell's Farm Supply Warehouse, a property that's under the same ownership to the north, and then two properties to the south. The one that contains the Senex Bulk Propane Distribution Site and then the next property to the south of it that contains the north end, the A1 Collision Autobody Parking Lot. In total, these four sites are about 1.34 acres. So this is a map of the first proposed change to the city park site to show how the zoning map would change with this request. And it would change from the brown designation of R20 to the gray designation of I institutional to reflect this zoning change. There's an aerial map of this same site shown on page 38 of your packet. The second location downtown here is proposed to change from DOC, DUC or the pink designation to M1 Light Industrial, which is light blue and the cross hatched at the center of the image. And there's an aerial photo of this site shown on page 37 of your package. So both of these requested zoning changes are to bring the zoning consistent with the comprehensive plan land use designations that were done and were the subject of a Planning Commission public hearing in October and adopted by the city council on December 18th, 2017 by Ordinance 6667. These changes are proposed to maintain the consistency between the comprehensive plan and the zoning regulations as required by the Washington State Growth Management Act and as required by the city's own regulations. This may look familiar to the council members because these were the two comprehensive plan amendments that led to this zoning request. We did CMP number two to change the property on Lee Hill to make it consistent with the approach at other properties. So it was changed from multifamily residential to institutional as a comp plan designation. And then at the other location, we had CMP number three to change the map designation of those four downtown parcels from their designation of downtown urban center to Light And I have some more maps. These are similar to the ones that are in your package that show those comp plan designations and what the aerial photo of those properties look like in both instances. This slide lists the specific findings of the staff report that are the basis for the Planning Commission recommendation applicable to the first site. This is the property on Lee Hill and the park site. So these specific findings detail a little bit about the history, how this property became as a park site and developed by development that was subject to a development agreement with the city prior to its annexation and the history leading to the current circumstance of why it took a long time for this property to be conveyed separately to the city. These findings are part of the staff report that was distributed in advance of tonight's meeting. Then this slide is the findings for the other site for the four parcels that are east of C Street Northwest. And it speaks to the original establishment of the DUC zoning district and comp plan designation, what the surrounding land uses are that are part of the impetus for this change. And it also details in terms of findings how the current property owners of like the warehouse, the Dell's Warehouse, the former Farm Supply Store, has had difficulty in attracting a tenant because of that building and that DUC zoning standards that make it subject to design review requirements that makes it more difficult to tenant that building.
Counselmember Wales has a question?
Yes, on that specific one, can you tell us a little bit about the parking lot portion of that particular one? I assume it's the south portion?
This slide lists the specific findings of the staff report that are the basis for the planning commission recommendation applicable to the first site. This is the property on Lee Hill and the park site. So these specific findings detail a little bit about the history, how this property became as a park site and developed by development that was subject to a development agreement with the city prior to its annexation, and the history leading to the current circumstance of why it took a long time for this property to be conveyed separately to the city. These findings are part of the staff report that was distributed in advance of tonight's meeting. Then this slide is the findings for the other site, for the four parcels that are east of C Street Northwest. And it speaks to the original establishment of the DUC zoning district and comp plan designation, what the surrounding land uses are that are part of the impetus for this change. And it also details in terms of findings how the current property owners of like the warehouse, the Dell's Warehouse, the former Farm Supply Store, has had difficulty in attracting a tenant because of that building and that DUC zoning standards that make it subject to design review requirements that makes it more difficult to tenant that building.
Councilmember Wales has a question?
Yes, on that specific one, can you tell us a little bit about the parking lot portion of that particular one? I assume it's the south portion?
So, yeah, so the southernmost parcel is the northern parking lot of the collision business.
Okay.
Yeah. There is a, there is a building at the north end of that property, so there is a building on that site. I suspect over time, the collision business didn't usually used to use that, but I think over time, they've made arrangements to use that from the property owner.
Okay.
As part of their business.
Okay, thank you.
actions and recommended to the city council approval of these changes at these two locations for this REZ 180001 without any conditions. And I would see this as proposed for council action on March 5th and bringing back to ordinance 6675. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about this proposal.
Any questions? Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Next we go to item number 4B, the mobile home closure process. Review of city and state regulations that define the requirements and process for closing an existing mobile home park. Jeff Tate?
For the record, Jeff Tate, Assistant Director of Community Development Services. The item that's in your packet this evening entitled Mobile Home Closure Process comes before council as a discussion item, an opportunity for staff to provide information regarding mobile home closure processes that exist at the local level and at the state level. And it's on tonight's agenda per council's request. The agenda materials provide a short overview of what the city code says related to mobile home closures. So Chapter 14.20 of the Auburn City Code is a dedicated chapter of code related to this subject. So it outlines the procedures that a property owner, an owner of a mobile home park must go through if they are contemplating closing the park and perhaps using the property for a different use in the future. This chapter of city code was adopted by city council back in 2003, so it's been in effect for nearly 15 years now, and we don't have any experience applying it. So we haven't, not that we've never seen a mobile home closed in Auburn before, but during the last 15 years, this code's not been applied. So hard to provide a lot of experiential type of information about how it has worked, but it is in place. I think, I found it interesting to pull the ordinance and read the whereas statements, which provides a little bit of history for why city council was contemplating and ultimately took action to create Chapter 14.20 of the Auburn City Code. Additionally, there are two sets of state regulations in the RCW that apply to mobile home closure. And one of those is RCW 59.20, which much like most people are familiar with there being a landlord-tenant law, this is not the same law, but it functions in many of the same ways. And it's entitled Manufactured Mobile Home Landlord-Tenant Act. What I've done in the, or in the packet material, the materials in your packet is provide the table of contents to that RCW. The RCW is pretty lengthy, but I did find myself looking at it that the table of contents for all the sections of that chapter of code are useful in giving you a flavor of what's contained within those rules. Likewise, Chapter 15, or 59.21 of the RCW is entitled Mobile Home Relocation Assistance Chapter. That particular chapter of RCW enacted by the state legislature sets up a, a process, a program, and a fund related to mobile home relocation assistance. So mobile home property owners actually pay into a fund that is managed by the state treasurer's office. And folks who are going to be displaced due to mobile home closure have the opportunity to apply for funds for assistance in their relocation efforts. Going back to the city code portion of the packet, a couple notes that I found were interesting in reading through the chapter of code. One is just that, you know, the fact that you have to comply, and there's penalties for not complying. Also, there's an eviction process, and essentially, a mobile home park owner needs to provide at least 12 months of notice to all tenants within the mobile home park when they're contemplating closure. They're also required under city code to provide relocation assistance, so helping those tenants find new places to move into. And then that we have oversight as a city of the plan that they follow through with and how they implement the plan for relocation notification. One of the principal tenants within the state law, which is a unique exception that you don't find in many other areas of state or local law, is that tenants who are going to be displaced by a mobile home closure, one of the challenges that they face not only is, you know, the financial challenge in the where am I going to go? But they own the property oftentimes, so they own the unit. The property owner owns the land, they own the unit. And depending upon the age of that unit, if they want to try to take that home from Park A and put it into Park B, they can face challenges related to compliance with modern codes. So an older unit, harder to retrofit an older mobile home or manufactured home to meet modern codes, it can be very expensive or frankly impractical. So what the state law does is it provides a protection for those, those mobile homeowners that they're not required to meet modern codes. They can take that unit and transport it and put it into a different park, and local municipalities are really precluded from adopting rules that would say otherwise. So that is a protection that's in place for the owners of the homes themselves.
Councilmember Wales?
So if I had to move my unit, do I have to get a moving permit, building permit, engineering permit, planning permit?
So to move from one, first of all, I guess one of the questions would be, are you moving that to another park within the city of Auburn? Or are you moving it to a park outside the city of Auburn? Because the answer would be a little different on each of those.
I'm going to move next door, Claude.
Okay. Claude, I know lives in Auburn, so. So if you're moving to another park within Auburn, you will have to get a permit to place the home there. But we do have limited authority on what types of rules we can review against. You know, the building codes, we're not going to be looking at the building codes as much as placement of the home and making sure maybe it meets an elevation if it's in a flood plain, things like that. And to move the home from one location to another within the city, you in all likelihood need a permit to move it through the road system within the city.
That's what I'm trying to.
On the same, pretty close to what she's saying, if you were talking about if a mobile park was closing down and a person wanted to move their, their mobile home, and it's at a very, it's, it's an older mobile home and it won't be able to be moved, who's responsible to, to place this individual? They've lived there for so many years, they, you know, their home, they want to move it, but it's, if they move it, it's going to fall apart. So who's responsible?
Well, I think that there's some. I think there's, there's some shared responsibilities. That's part of what burdened the, the mobile home park owner, so the owner of the land, they have an obligation, they have a requirement to assist. So assist doesn't mean give them money necessarily, but it does mean find a place, try to bring in resources for that person who may need some additional assistance in the form of money, which is where the, the state program, which actually does have a fund, they might be eligible to receive funds to assist in that very scenario. I don't think that the answer to that is always going to be the exact same. It is going to be situational depending upon what that person's needs are, what solution they find in terms of where they're going, their eligibility criteria for receiving funds. So it's, there's going to be a little bit of wrapping around a person like that to try to find a solution, but it doesn't land directly with any particular party that, that of who has to, to provide a new home basically.
Councilmember Wales?
I can see where some of these trailers are in kind of rough shape, but the other mobile home park could choose not to take them as a tenant? Because I mean, if I lived there and with Claude and somebody was bringing in like a 50-year-old one that might have some real significant electrical problems or whatever, I'd be really concerned, fire and some other kinds of things. But the receiving park can say, no, they don't want it.
Yeah, there are, yeah, the, the park has rights as well.
Okay, great.
And so they have some ability to choose what comes into the park.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff, I think one of the misnomers in this whole complex thing we deal with, with mobile homes is very few of them are mobile.
Right.
Would you set up a mobile, a manufactured home, okay? Although it's not a permanent foundation set, it's permanent, it's there. And I think the only ones that we would have, anybody would have a potential to move would be the single lines, which are few and far between. So trying to take a double wide mobile home or a triple wide mobile home and relocate it to another park is cost prohibitive, especially for an older one, because the value of that home is less than nothing. So I guess my question or statement would be is that, I think there needs to, and this is not just us, but I think in the state law, there needs to be something that goes beyond the recognition of moving a mobile home because the state legislature knows it's costly. There needs to be something that says it's virtually impossible to move some of these homes, and there's needs to be some sort of a remedy situation for that. If you've got, many people are low income, even where we live in our park, many people are low income. Their homes are built in the 1970s, so they have the old wood paneling inside, you know, not drywalled. And pretty much those people just have to literally abandon their homes and let the park owners, you know, do what they got to do, more than likely destroy it and put a new one in. But these people would be virtually homeless on that.
Yes.
So I think there needs to be some other thoughts given to this as we move forward, and perhaps as a city, we need to kind of maybe take some, some initiative as well. I'm sorry. Deputy Mayor?
Just, just a statement that very few of the parks, especially in our city, have any new available properties available. So the fact of trying to find something within our city and even outside of our city is, is next to nothing, not available.
And there's not a lot of new mobile home parks opening.
That's true. You know, I think it's also important, Deputy Mayor Baggett lives in the new section of the river, which the homes there are just, I mean, they're front entries, you know, they're, they're homes, you know? If you brought somebody in and said, you know, this is a manufactured home or a mobile home, some people may have a little difficult time understanding that because of the nicety of the, of the home and the, the modern designs and the features of those homes now. Contrast it to when the rent and levy was done, we lost 16 homes, 16 homes in that park. The majority of the residents relocated with inside the park, including a gentleman in the audience tonight, who moved from that part of the park to another part of the park. And, you know, that, that worked pretty well. And now we have more homes there than we had when we took the 16 out. But I think also, again, you know, looking at park owners, that's something that's probably not too enticing for them to do. Acquiring land, putting that kind of a infrastructure in place to, you know, to do that, you know, while they get their monthly rent, you know, that'd be a little more difficult for a lot of park owners to do as compared to what land we had available in our park and the willingness of the owners to do something there as well. So again, I think, you know, we need to kind of rethink some of this process overall.
Deputy Mayor, just a statement, I have a vacant lot next to me. If Councilmember Largo Wales and her husband Michael is willing to move down, come on down.
You know how I like to be close to you.
Sorry, Councilmember Brown?
I was just going to say there may be a quorum issue there, but.
No.
I have a question, though. Has there been any substantial change of circumstances since the 2003 date when the ordinance was passed? Is there, is there a concern that's growing? As you well know, I mean, I have half a dozen relatives that live in those parks. Is there something happening that we're not aware of? Or is this just a review?
It's a review on, there's nothing that staff is aware of that's, that's going on.
Okay.
I mean, I should have passed this out before, but this is a map that we'll show you. And I don't know them by name, but just shows you where all the mobile home parks are.
We look at from our standpoint where we are there, and you have relatives in there as well. Fortunately, we have a family-owned enterprise there that owns multiple parks throughout the west coast. And I think they're more involved with how their parks operate, and it's their, their business. Where if somebody's looking at basically flipping a park, there'd be some serious problems with that, of how they deal with that. And just as an example, when I was with the King County Housing Authority, there was a park up in Redmond that one of the large home builders was going to take over, a low-income park. The housing authority went in and bought the park and renovated the homes as well as doing, doing an entirely new infrastructure process to have people maintain and keep their homes who are low income. And again, our area still, there is a number of low-income individuals who live in the river. Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Just, just a statement, that's why I was concerned about some of these people that have lived there for years. This is my home, you know, and now I'm going to have to be replaced, but I want to take my home and I can't. So it's a little concerning because I don't want to see anybody be homeless, you know? So that's why I was wondering who would help out or how would they be replaced and stuff like that.
There's also a lobbying group that lobbies extensively down in Olympia for manufactured homes. In fact, I get updates from them quite often. So there is a group that is actively advocating for mobile homes.
Mayor, could you send us council members some updates on that?
Well, I don't, I haven't had any lately. I'm just saying that I've had some, but, but yes, they're, they're available.
One last thing, I just wanted to remind everybody, there are some bills down at the legislature going through right now. I don't know whether they're going to get approved or not, but there's, I think, three bills. And they, they would be extending in some cases the period of time given to the, the owners of the mobile homes to relocate or find others assistance. So I'm not sure which ones, there's a Senate bill, a House bill, and I'm not sure there's one of them.
Councilmember Holman?
I had some conversations with a gentleman who's a neighbor of yours, John, and he actually has a summary of those three bills. And if it pleases the chair and fellow council members, I think, and if he's willing, he could present what those three pieces of legislation are. I don't know if you want to take the time.
Right. Perhaps what we can do is, John, maybe you can provide us with some information and data. Maybe set up a follow-up and have you come in and do the presentation fairly quickly on one of our, on the legislative process, because you're, he's a legislative rep for our homeowner association, I was one year. And it's a, you have to keep on top of these things, very much so, in order to know what's happening both in the. in order to know what's happening both in Olympia and what's happening along the lines. Councilmember Wills?
Maybe we could add that to our matrix.
Yeah, you're good, okay.
When we get to that point in the business. Because I'd also like to have an update on the water billing situation that's going on there. And maybe we could dovetail them together and get some information.
Good. Anything else?
No.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, on to our capital project status report, item 4C.
Chavon Grayton Company?
Thank you for having us. For the record, my name is Ryan Bondrack. I am the Capital Projects Manager with the city. And to my right is Kim Trong, she's one of our project engineers. Before we actually get into the CPS report as it sits, I wanted to go over a few key figures. But we also have some slides that we can show you, some pictures. And then we'll talk about the feature capital project for the spring 2018 article. So first things first, this slide, you've seen it before in previous presentations. This kind of shows our capital expenditures by year for the last five, six years. In 2018, you'll see we're expecting to spend about sixteen million in 2018. A little, quite a bit less than last year. That number might go up slightly depending on how a few of our projects go into construction this year. Overall, our current status, we're working on thirty-five active capital projects. Nineteen of them are in design. This is a little bit different than what's shown on your agenda bill because we added one project recently to the capital project status report. So nineteen of those projects are in design and sixteen are in construction. Of those nineteen projects that are in design, eight of them are expected to go into the construction phase within the next three months. Some of those key projects that are going to go into construction here shortly, the Fifteenth Street Northwest/Northeast Preservation Project, which Kim will speak to in a few minutes. We also have a storm repair and replacement project that is going to go out into construction. The 2018 local streets pavement reconstruction project. The arterial patching and overlay project, that's the new project that entered the CPS report, which I'll talk about later. And the South 277th Street Preservation Project. All of those are expected to go into construction within the next three months. So if we go into the actual CPS, I have a few photos, it's kind of a show and tell. So page one of the CPS, we have the Auburn Way South Corridor Improvement Project. So that project is still in construction. So I have a before and, not really an after picture, but a before and during photo because construction is still going on. But this is right in front of the Muckleshoot Casino. And you can see the improvements that were going on there. Same page, we have the 277th Street Corridor Improvement Project. This project is also still in construction, but we're nearing completion. There are some cool photos that we have of this corridor, the before. As you can see, that project, we expanded the roadway to five lanes. This, the after photo we have here is mainly wanting to show you the Class One Separated Trail that we installed on the south side of the roadway there. So you can kind of see it along the, that's the driveway entrance looking east, the driveway to the Chevron, that's what you're looking at right there. Okay?
See, that's a, it was, I drive that a lot. The improvement there is just phenomenal.
It is.
And the only difficulty we have is we have some drivers who do not like to drive the speed limit on that road. Councilmember Wills?
They are, they truly are beautiful. But I did note that beauty bark was used in the median in some areas and on the edge. And I thought we had concerns about the use of beauty bark as it relates to getting kicked up and going into the drains and some of those other kinds of things that beauty bark can do. So why was beauty bark used there when we're not allowed sometimes in our newer developments to use it along the roads?
Where's the beauty bark at? Where's the beauty bark at?
Okay, in front of the Muckshoots, it's in the median.
Oh, that's actually the 1218. We did not put any beauty bark, this is 277.
Okay, well, there's beauty bark there too.
There is?
Yeah.
Yes, along the landscaping shrubs. But we have planted a lot of the shrubs along there. They're fairly small right now, but as it grows, it, you know, take up some space. But in order to stabilize that kind of raw dirt area, we've been using the beauty bark there.
Okay, so you're going to use the plants to stabilize it so it doesn't kick up and get into the streets and into the drains? Thank you.
Moving on for 277, this is looking westbound. And it's a little hard to see the after photo, so we're in the middle of the street there. The after photo, you can see in the background there, there is a DMS Dynamic Message Sign similar to the one that was put on Auburn Way South. So that is the exact same type of sign. So we'll be able to display some critical traffic information along there. And lastly, this is kind of a cool photo, it's, the after photo is all slightly off, but we're looking south into the, adjacent to the RPG property. This is our new storm pond and mitigated stream that we installed along the corridor. Page two of the CPS, I threw in the couple of pictures of the former wellfield project. I thought it was cool just to show you one of the well pipe columns being installed through the hatch of the building there. So it's just kind of a cool picture. The other pictures of them just installing that pipe column.
Councilmember Trump?
Where is this exactly?
Former wellfields on page two.
No, 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 but where is this? The location of this?
The actual location?
Yeah.
It is, what would be a good way to explain it?
Over by the high, Auburn High School.
Northeast of Auburn High School.
Yeah.
Couple of streets over. Sorry, Bob.
That's good.
Can you call out the project number when you?
This is, yes, so CP 1107. Twenty-second and I Street, this is on page three of your report. This is not necessarily a fascinating photo. But I want to point out that this project, there's a lot going on in a kind of a confined area. And so you'll, as you're driving through there, you're going to see a lot of barrels. They're finishing up the storm work right now, and they're going to start doing the water utility, underground utility work. And so just kind of keep caution as you drive through there, there's just a lot going on in the intersection.
Deputy Mayor Baggett?
I noticed you had a finished date of April of this year. Does that look like we're still on schedule to that, or we're going to be suspect?
That is possible, given the working days in the contract. It depends on weather. They were slowed considerably in the wintertime due to a number of things. They didn't really get underway until recently. So January is when they really started going. So we're working out with them on a few things. But yeah, based on the schedule and what we have, that is doable. We'll see how it goes.
Councilmember Holson?
So on this project, how often does staff check this project out? It's a big project, so how often do you guys?
We have inspection out there, inspector out there every day.
Every day?
Every day. They're not there full-time, but they're out there throughout the week, do daily reports.
Nick Q, any question? No, okay. I was just questioning my folks.
Also on page three, B Street Reconstruction Project, CP 1520. This is a really cool shot, I got it before and after. This is looking southbound on B Street. You can see the severe alligator cracking that is happening on the roadway and now the beautiful corridor that you see. I don't know if you guys have driven it recently, but it drives really nicely.
Is that where the speeders are, that street? Well, I mean, we've had, is this the notorious street that we've had problems?
No.
No?
It just got resurfaced, Bill. You could barely, it was, you could barely drive on it. And it was the worst street in our entire system.
It went from a pavement rating of zero to one hundred.
Same page, PR three, page three, Lee Hill PRV Stations, the last one, your sheet CP 1617. I just wanted to give you guys a couple of cool shots of them installing one of the PRVs. Pretty large piece of infrastructure there.
That's Lee Hill?
Yeah, well, yeah.
That's on Lee Hill. Wow. Okay, and now the feature capital project, which Kim will take you through.
So our feature capital project is the Fifteenth Street Northeast/Northwest Preservation Project. It is on page six of your CPS reports, project number CP 1521. This project will be featured in our Auburn magazines and the spring editions.
Sorry, that's on page six.
Page six, yes.
Page six?
Sixty-four of eighty-nine.
Sixty-four of eighty-nine, sorry, yes. CP 1521.
Yes. So here's a map of the project location. In orange is the project limits, you can see there. And it's just, starting just east of State Route 167 along the Fifteenth Street Corridor and it continues south along Harvey Road and ends at Eighth Street Northeast. So the corridor is not too far south of the Auburn Airport and the M. O. Downs. And then the Green River is just to the east there. And here in this video, I'm standing on Fifteenth Street looking west toward the intersection of Fifteenth and A Street. And you can see that it's a very busy road. This corridor is a five-lane roadway with nearly thirty thousand vehicles driving past through this corridor each day. This is also, it also provides a route for transit services and bus route of over eighty-five trips per day. It's also a freight route to over four million tons of goods transported a year. And with such a heavily used corridor, there are wear and tear's are expected. And so the surface conditions are in pretty poor shape right now, and some of the curb are damaged. And also, we are seeing some of the localized drainage issues along the corridor. And also some area there are limited pedestrian access. So those are the kind of things that this project is necessary is in order to improve some of those issues.
So how will this be phased in? That's a long stretch of roadway to do. So what's our phasing process on this?
It's going to be done on one phase under one construction period.
So they're just going to block off maybe one lane and traffic control it in that sense, or?
Yes, so some of the construction, especially the concrete work, will be done during the day. And there'll be intermittent, you know, traffic, lane closures. But a lot of the grinding and overlay work and loops work are going to be done at night due to, you know, how, due to the volume of the street basically throughout the whole day. It's pretty high volume.
Councilmember Wills?
Some of the entrances to some of the businesses on that street, are any of those going to be redesigned in any way? Because you've got the Starbucks one that's very, very close to the intersection, followed by another one that goes into Rite Aid. And then on the right, on the other side, you've got, you know, there's so many ingresses and egresses that are you going to do any redesign or just kind of let it go as it is?
So the only area we're actually redesign, or reconstructing, the driveway aprons are an area where we're reconstructing the curb ramps at the corner, and it impacts their driveway. But if it's not within that area, it's not within the scope of the projects. We're basically going to do a grind overlay.
Okay, thank you.
So the improvements that we're proposing for this project includes grinding and paving of the existing pavement to provide a smoother riding surface and then also provide structural integrity to the roadway. And also replacing some of the damaged curb ramps and upgrading the curb ramps to meet ADA standards in order to improve access for people with disabilities. And we're going to be upgrading some of the existing pedestrian signal system to more energy-efficient LED signal heads and also making sure they're all AD accessible to provide better pedestrian access. There are a few traffic signal poles along the corridor that are in area where it's prone to be damaged by larger vehicles. So with this project, we'll be relocating some of those signal poles into a more protected area, which in turn would reduce some of the maintenance costs for the city. And then we'll be replacing some of the damaged curb and gutter along the corridor so that we will, should be, or should help to alleviate some of the existing drainage issue that we're seeing.
Councilmember Trump?
So with all of that going back and redoing all of that, is that all in the cost already? Is that all put, they're in the cost, so it's not going to cost us anymore?
Yeah, I'll go into the funding in a little bit. But yes, it's in total and it's all accounted for.
Councilmember Wills?
Also at that intersection, they cleaned off a whole corner of vegetation and put up fencing. Is that going to be rejuvenated or have new plants put in or kind of spruced up?
That's the Parks Department. That's a project the Parks Department is working on right now.
So here's the project schedule. So the design of this project started in 2017, last year. And it's anticipated to be complete next month in March of this year. And then after that, we'll move into the advertisement and award phase. And then construction is anticipated to start in June and be completed by September. So this project is funded by multiple sources, which include federal grants and also city money, totaling about twenty million dollars, I mean, two million, sorry, two million dollars. And you might notice that the number doesn't match the report number. And that's because the funding has been updated after we printed these CPS reports.
And we did the design in-house on this?
It's a collective effort. We have done, the site improvements are done in-house, but some of the signal work and loops work are done by our consultant.
Councilmember Wills?
I'm really excited to see another street in Auburn kind of spruced up. But I'd like to, and it's nice to know, that we are working with the parks to kind of do the other side of that street. It would be nice if we could have code enforcement go down that street and look at some other ways that we could kind of spruce it up. We're fortunate that one of the abandoned buildings has since been demolished and removed. But there are some other things along there that maybe code enforcement could help us with. Huge real estate signs that are a hazard because they're not mounted in the ground. And some of the garbage can issues along there that kind of go out onto the sidewalks. So maybe during this next year, we could get code enforcement involved also.
Any other questions?
The last one we wanted to highlight was the new project that I, I mentioned, the arterial patching overlay project. I just wanted to kind of give you guys the locations. We're doing a thin overlay on West Hill on the map. We're grinding an overlay on Way North. That's, um, the top section right before we did two seventy-seventh. Middle of our town, we're hitting Terraceview Drive with a, with a grinding overlay as well as Eighth Street Northeast. Our Street Southeast and Auburn Black Diamond Road, and then doing a, um, an overlay on Lee Hill. In that area there on the right-hand side of the screen. And then lastly, on the south side of town, Lakeland Hills Way, we're doing a deep patch, um, south of, or north of Evergreen. So that is the presentation side. Do you guys have any questions about the CPS?
Any specific questions on projects we've uncovered?
I, I have. Up there on, um, the muckle chute where you're completing, getting close to completing all that, we have double lines, uh, right there where Dogwood and, um, Auburn Way southeast, southeast. People, you've already done the, um, construction where people can turn into the little gas station there on the corner. Not the shelf, but the other one. There's, was almost an accident here just a moment ago because people turned into, you've got the double lines. It was kind of like a V shape. They just swerved in there and got in front of vehicles that were coming north. And, uh, is, is the law where you can't cross double line, are those in effect? Or people just don't pay attention to the double lines?
Well, if it's an entrance to a driveway, you can cross double lines. That is a legal movement, yeah. You can turn across them, yes. You can turn across.
You can turn across. Okay, and then right now with the muckle chute going to the casino, you've got all these big old, um, red, um, what do you call them, barriers? People are going into the wrong turn-in, and they're crossing into, uh, in front of vehicles. They're making their own path, is what I'm trying to say. So they do this in the evening. I, during the daytime, you've got people up there. So right now, I just see an accident.
We'll take a look at that, how that's channelized. We are, that project is, is getting close to wrapping up. We are expected to be done in April. Part of it is the, the paving limitations don't allow you to pave until, um, after April first. So it, that's part of the, the issue there, but, um, we'll look at the channelization and look at the, how the, everything is set up.
Yeah, cause you, I'm seeing it more and more, older gentlemen or women are going into that barrier section, and there's nowhere for them to turn.
We'll take a look at it.
Councilmember Wells?
On Eighth Street Northeast, I think you shared with us the plan before, and it's closer to the intersection of Harvey and Eighth Street. But I was hoping that the portion from Fred Meyer to Harvey, that Eighth Street portion, that maybe the ad hoc kind of, um, look at that, I know it's outside your plan, but that is a major thoroughfare for buses and for kids, and the sidewalks, you know, are kind of on one side and not on the other end. But it would be a major project because it would require the acquisition of property or something. But I think that it needs to be, um, somewhere on the, the list, and if your committee could look at it, that would be nice.
Meeting tomorrow, so we'll talk about it, yeah. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
I like the picture.
Now we'll move on to ordinance number sixty-six seventy-two, forty-four D.
So good evening. For the record, Ingrid Galb, Assistant Director of Engineering, City Engineer. And I don't have a huge PowerPoint for you tonight, but I thought that this would be helpful in talking about the sidewalk code revisions that are being proposed. So, chapter twelve, twelve of the city code was codified in nineteen fifty-seven, and I think we've done one update to it in nineteen eighty-three. So it's a little outdated. So we spent quite a bit of time over the last several months, multiple, uh, folks from different departments looking at this code to figure out what did we really need to keep within it, and what did we need to change to accomplish a couple of things. The main point is to clarify and update kind of what the, uh, current practices and interpretations are. Provide some clarification for responsibilities and installation and repair and replacement, especially with property owners. A lot of that is to actually help with our code enforcement folks, um, so that they have better code to actually go out and enforce with residents. In addition, we heard from Master Builders Association and from several developers that having the ability to put, uh, private irrigation into the right-of-way would be helpful for dealing with landscape strips, especially in newer plats, so that we can maintain those plantings a little bit better. So a big portion of this is to actually allow that process a little easier than what our current process is. There was also, uh, language in there that I believe was added in nineteen fifty-seven when, uh, there was no state codes about local improvement districts. So there was a lot of language in there about a local improvement district process really for sidewalks in particular. So now that we have state law that kind of covers what a local improvement district process is, we don't really need our own separate code for that, so we don't necessarily want to have the conflicts between our code and the state code. So we suggest removing that whole section. So you'll see a lot of deletion in there, and a lot of that is because of that local. Uh, and then we wanted to also add in there, so previously, um, the penalty process, so when somebody isn't complying with that code, the process was for the city to go out and do the improvement and then lean the property. That was the only option we had. So we wanted to revise that and actually go through a code enforcement process, uh, in doing that instead. It may end up leaning towards where we do the abatement process, but it starts with that code enforcement first process. So with that, um, so one of the definitions in there is to really define what is the sidewalk area within the public right-of-way, and that's probably the, the biggest change in those definitions. And the intent of this is that you're looking at basically the sidewalk and the landscaping area, or if it might be a ditch and planted area from the edge of paved roadway to the property line for an adjacent property. So whatever happens to be in there or from the back of the curb. So we wouldn't ask property owners to be responsible for maintaining anything from the curb into the street, but from the back of the curb to the property line. So that's where that's at. In the responsibilities part, we wanted to clarify kind of what the responsibility was for new construction and tie that to some of the codes that we have in other chapters, so that it was clear that this wasn't superseding those, that this was just basically if you're triggering half-street improvements where you need to put in sidewalk or landscaping, you're following those requirements. But this is just identifying how we do that and what those responsibilities are. Uh, we wanted to also clarify the maintenance responsibilities for the adjacent property owner. So what does that maintenance mean? That that's keeping the sidewalk area clean, keeping it maintained, keeping the vegetation maintained, uh, so that they understood what, and dealing with snow and ice on those sidewalks in those areas. So it's very clear for code enforcement to deal with that. None of that is really different than what our current practice has been. It's just clearer in the language that we've put in there. And then for repair replacement, we wanted to provide some clarification for when the adjacent property owner is actually responsible for replacing or repairing that sidewalk, especially if their private tree has damaged that sidewalk, or if they have driven over that sidewalk and caused damage to that sidewalk. That's something that that property owner should be responsible for and not the city in general, so. Any questions on the responsibility portion for that?
Councilmember Wells?
Up on, going up, um, Lee Hill, um, on, uh, three hundred and fourth. On the right side of the road or the southern side, we have a sidewalk, we have a curb. Maybe we don't have curbs. Yes, we do. We have curbs, we have a sidewalk, then there's this, uh, vegetation, and then there's a fence for the people's backyard. So if you're saying that, um, people own, uh, are responsible from the edge of the curb, can those people move their fence up against the sidewalk?
It, it doesn't give them rights to the public right-of-way.
Okay.
But they are responsible for the vegetation from their property line to that curb line. So if it's a planter strip, if it's a vegetated area behind the sidewalk, we have those situations in numerous places around town.
Yeah.
And, uh, we try to avoid creating those situations, uh, in the future. Unfortunately, a lot of that was created, uh, a long, long time ago.
Yeah.
So, but those property owners are technically responsible for that vegetation area outside of, uh, their fence.
Okay. Cause some have, some have moved their fence out to the sidewalk, which makes it easier for them to maintain all of that stuff, and then there's an air edward.
So, and I don't know the specific location we're talking about, so I don't know where the property line is in relation to that sidewalk, and that would be something that would have to be looked at.
Councilmember Trump, you know?
Well, there's the right-of-way, and there's a fence, like Barbara was saying. And if that person's tree is hanging over, and people are using that tree as a shelter, is it their responsibility to cut that, those limbs that are hanging over?
If there's a, a tree with limbs hanging over the public right-of-way, there are some clearance distances that we are, that we have in code in other sections of code that cover how high that needs to be trimmed up to and that it needs to be cut off of the sidewalk. Uh, and those, the adjacent property owner that owns that tree is responsible for making that, uh, doing that trimming in the public right-of-way.
Cause there's, there's a place where I'm talking about that a lot of the homeless people or tribal people are coming out underneath this, and they bring their own little cardboard boxes, and they, they camp out there, and they're doing all their exchanging and stuff. And so I was just wondering, they finally cleared up the tree across the street. They cut all those down, but that one, the owner has the...
Yeah, so, so the changes to the code that we're proposing would actually make it easier for Jeff's code enforcement staff to actually go and address situations like that. So private irrigation in the right-of-way, um, so a little bit of background. So currently, the only way that we can allow private irrigation in the right-of-way is to require, uh, somebody to go through a right-of-way use permit that only gives them permission to be there for about five years, and then they have to renew it every five years. So there's a lot of work that goes into, to doing that process. So what we propose in the code revisions that are there is to, to get away from having to do the right-of-way use permit process, but have code allow it outright with a couple of exceptions. So we'd still require construction permits for them to do the installation and repair work on there. We require them to actually put locate wire on their systems in the right-of-way because they also need to be part of the one-call system under state regulations, once they put that into the public right-of-way. So what that means for them is that they register with one-call, they'll receive a call when somebody wants to dig in the area that they've identified. They're responsible for going out and actually marking their system, which is why we want the locate wire to make that a little easier for them. The main benefit for this is, is it allows property owners to do better maintenance on what those landscape strips look like long-term and keep them in a green and nicely planted situation. So with that, are there any other questions?
Any questions? I'm glad to see that we've taken a sixty-one-year-old code and we've updated it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, so this will come before you on the fifth for approval.
And then our last item is, um, I'm sorry, item number sixty-six seventy-nine? I, I, E, I'm sorry, Avery, go ahead. I missed that one.
So this one is super exciting, purchasing and, uh, and public contracts code. Uh, so I'm Jacob Sweeney, your Assistant City Engineer. Say the best for last, right? So, um, there's a really, uh, not whole, a lot of exciting things that we need to talk about, but I wanted to run this, uh, by you because we will be bringing the ordinance to council at the next council meeting session. Uh, so the, the first part is the three-point-oh, uh, three-point-one-oh purchasing of the Auburn City Code. And, uh, we are proposing a few things to provide clarifications and cleanup. Uh, first, consultant and service agreements authorization. Currently, the limits for contracts, uh, for the authorization of contracts versus the authorization of contracts for consultant and service agreements, those authorization limits don't match. And so all we're proposing to do is to correct that so that they both match, uh, and the discrepancy lies in what the mayor's approval authority, uh, is listed at. One says twenty-five, one says fifty K. We're proposing to make both fifty K to make it match. The next change relates to real estate purchases for budgeted projects. Uh, for all the other contracts we have in the code, uh, if the budget has been approved by the city council for a project, and that project includes, uh, contracts or other agreements, uh, the mayor then has the authority to enter those, to group, into those agreements. We want to update the real estate portion to say, if it's for a real estate transaction, if it's for a budgeted project, same thing. It's, it's authorized, uh, the mayor can authorize that agreement. Yes?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Wells?
So would that just be for the purchase of, of property as it relates to, um, public works and engineering? Or would that apply to when the Parks Department wants to buy a piece of property for fifty thousand?
It would relate to a budgeted project. So if the Parks Department has a budgeted project to make that project.
And then there's also some clarifications to the rules for on-call consulting agreements. Uh, right now, it's, it's pretty vague in the code, uh, how that works. And what we're proposing is to add some clarification, uh, such that we can still do on-call contracting for consultant agreements. Uh, but every time that we need to do an amendment to add more money to it, as long as worth, with, within the original threshold and within five years, we can come once a year and authorize that consultant agreement, uh, to replenish the funds that have been spent on projects. And then finally, um, there's some, some additional code that we're proposing related to sole source contracting. We have seen situations where, uh, there are items that we need to procure, where there's only one possible vendor out there that provides that item. Right now, state law says that if the city code is silent, we have to come to city council to get approval for that. Uh, what the code changes are proposing is that if there is only one sole, uh, source item available, that the authorization for that, uh, sole source contract would come from the mayor.
Sorry, Jay, what, what section was that in?
That's in, uh, it's towards the end.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking somehow that piece got left out, so we'll need to add that in.
Yeah, my apologies. Just wanted to take a look at that.
Hi, um, I need some more clarification.
Sure.
I see, um, public works and, um, as a, a must as it relates to safety and our responsibility. And so authorization for, to work directly with the mayor for fifty thousand dollar property acquisition or whatever, I have no problem with. But I do have a problem with giving that same latitude to the Parks Department. And the Parks Department, to me, is not a primary, uh, health and safety kind of an issue. So explain to me how that's, that works.
You're talking about the real estate purchases?
Yes, yes.
So, I mean, right now, the, the language, so that's on page, uh, eighty-one of eighty-nine, under I O P. So basically, it's, it's unless the value is under twenty-five thousand or less, or unless... or less, or unless required for a budgeted project. So a budgeted project would be something that would go through the council approval process and a budget process. So you, as council, you have the ability to ask questions at the time of that budget process on those projects that indicate that we have a, uh, right of way phase, or a property purchase phase, to have that approved. Um, so it'd be part of that, that capital budgeting process.
Mm-hmm.
So a question already asked, oh, sorry.
And I think Dan wants to add something as well.
Which has already been approved by?
Correct. So the council approves that budget, which is why we feel like for, for capital projects, when we're doing property acquisition for projects, we would be looking at, we've already discussed it with you during that budget process. You've already said, okay, yes, we need to do some property acquisition for that, and it's already part of the approved budget for the project.
So that fifty thousand dollars increased by, if there's some unknown circumstances, it increases it more after that? Does that come back to council?
So, so this, this doesn't necessarily have the, um...
It should.
It should. This would be, no, cause in this case, if it's for a budgeted project, then it would go forward.
Right. So the, the fifty thousand doesn't necessarily apply to this because you're approving the budget in that budget pro, process for the capital project. The budget for raw property acquisition might be a million dollars. You'd be approving us to go do whatever that purchase is for that project, for that million dollars. You may recall that over the years, we've had to come and bring you separate resolutions for each project to get permission to go after each, uh, property purchase that we need to do, as well as if we can't negotiate, uh, with property owners, we have to come to you with, uh, additional action for condemnation processes. So all, condemnation still has to go through a process with the council regardless of this, if we got to that point, but it, this would allow us, if we can negotiate what those prices are, and we are within the budget of the project for that, that the staff would have the ability to go forward and do that. Do you want to add anything?
I just need some more clarification. Is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
So, we put in the bill, in the budget, a million dollars for, um, you to buy a corner because we're gonna put in a parking lot. And in the negotiations, we, it's built into the budget, and it, during the negotiations project, process, it comes in at a million forty thousand. This would give you the authorization to, to make the deal, if the mayor signs off on it.
The, so the forty thousand would be within the fifty thousand mayor's authorization. So yes, the mayor could authorize to go forward with that procurement. If it was a million one hundred, it would have to go back to the council for additional conversation because it would be outside the budget.
Okay, just say that one more time.
So if it was a million one hundred?
Yeah.
Which is a hundred thousand dollars more than the budget.
Okay.
It's outside the mayor's authority. It would still have to come back to the council for approval to go forward.
Okay.
So it's, it's up to the fifty thousand dollar living, thank you.
Okay. Because the way the, the purchasing code reads is for something that's not budgeted up to fifty thousand, the mayor has the authority to approve that. Dan wants to add something.
Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to mention that the, uh, sole source purchasing is on page eighty-five.
Thank you.
It's, the reason it's in a different place than other parts is because it's a new section.
It's a new section. So it's, it's not underlined, which is what was throwing Jake off.
It's not red.
You don't, you don't have to underline it completely in the section.
Cause it's a new section. Thank you, Dan.
Okay.
I just, I have a real, I just want, you know, but I have no problem with the ability to have property acquisition that comes in fifty thousand more than what we've, uh, budgeted, uh, be just reviewed by the mayor for approval. I, I, I have, I feel like sometimes our parks department is a runaway entity, and, um, and it's, they're not a absolute, they're very important to our community, but public works is an absolute must, and they're dealing with safety issues primarily, and they should have it, but not other departments.
So you ready to go on to three twelve?
Public contracts. So, uh, we've also proposed some cha, some changes to section three point one-two, public contracts, and these do generally relate to, uh, construction contracts, uh, most of which do, uh, originate in some form from the engineering public works department, but they also come from other places within the city. So the first thing is the declaration of subcontractors. Uh, right now, for contracts that have a value of over one million dollars, a contractor has to declare certain subcontractors at the time of bid. However, the state law is not clear on what constitutes a one million dollar contract value. Is that before or after sales tax? Is that the engineer's estimate at the beginning of design, or when it goes out to bid? So we added some code to clarify of when, we proposed that would be at the city, so there's clear definition, uh, for a bidder of when that would be required or not. Uh, it will help eliminate the potential of errors, um, or mistakes when the contractors put into the, together the bid. So we do include, we are proposing that that, uh, million dollars would include sales tax, and it would be determined at the, at the time of bid open, what the engineer's estimate is for that work. Non-formally bid contracts, uh, we already have provisions in the code for contracts that are below bid limits. Uh, construction contracts that is below bid limits, uh, would be forty dollars for a single trade work.
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand. How did, how should I say it?
Forty thousand.
Oh, yeah. Hopefully it's not forty dollars. Forty thousand, forty thousand dollars for single trade, sixty-five thousand dollars for multi-trade. Uh, and we're really just cleaning up the, the verbiage there a little bit. We have a few avenues that we do those contracts through. It is either through, um, a small works roster, or a limited public works process, or another process which per the code would be something that the city engineer defines as appropriate, and that, for us, has, our business practice for the city engineer has been to try to seek at least three quotes for that work.
Do you have an internal small works roster? Is that shared with other?
So ours is shared with municipal research services?
Okay.
And then, um, there was a change to state law last year as it relates to retainage options for a contractor. For most all of our construction contracts, a minimum five percent, well, five percent retainage must be held, uh, by the city in either an escrow account, account, or by the city, uh, to help cover potential costs of the contractor, um, not paying suppliers, not paying their employees. And then there's a clearinghouse process for the contractor to regain those funds after the contract is complete.
And that's five percent for the entire, entire job?
It's five percent for the construction contract, yes. Now, for smaller, uh, contracts, the old rule says, and this is something to help give smaller contractors an opportunity to go for those smaller contracts, uh, if the contract is thirty-five thousand dollars or less, a contractor can waive the requirement to actually go out and get a performance bond, which sometimes can be prohibitive for smaller contractors, and instead have fifty percent retainage withheld. So usually a smaller contract, it's done in a shorter time period, so the retainage won't be held as long, uh, and they don't have that cost of securing the bond. Well, that changed. The legislature passed, uh, last summer, uh, instead of saying thirty-five thousand and a half retention, they changed that to be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is now the limit, and instead it's a ten percent retainage, uh, for waiving the bond requirements. So just a little change. We had to clarify, or we are proposing to clarify the code, code, so it matches what the state law is.
Have we had contractors come in and ask to re, to bond the retainage?
Yes.
And what's our position on that?
It is an option we, uh, we allow.
We're, we're required to allow it.
Where's, where's that written in our code?
I haven't seen it explicitly written in the code, but I believe it's part of the, the RCWs and.
Yeah, so, so it's in state law, so we don't have the ability to, to not allow it.
Just reference the state, the state law for us, so we know where it's at, so.
And then, of course, for federally funded projects, there is not.
Right.
Retainage allowed.
No, if there's, if there's one dollar federal money in it, that precludes the state law?
Precludes retainage.
One dollar in construction, yes.
That's a grant we might turn down.
So that would be all of your transportation grants. Just want to make that clear. That's all your transportation.
This is one of those nuances of the federal government, where they put a dollar in, and you get to follow their rules.
[laughing]
Uh, there's some, also, a section, uh, proposed to be added to the code that talks about, uh, how that retainage, uh, is cleared for returning back to the contractor when the project is complete. And, um, we're proposing that, uh, the final acceptance becomes an administrative process that is allowed to be completed by the city engineer, once the project is complete, so that the retainage and the bond can be released administratively without coming back to council after the contract.
How long does it take us to close out a project?
It varies.
I know it varies with the project.
It varies, yeah.
So, so most all of our construction contracts require a one-year warranty. So usually one year after the completion of the warranty, if all the affidavits, and, uh, there's no liens or claims against the project, that's when the release project.
Okay, very good.
And then finally, there's just some cleanup to, uh, the section related to contractor evaluations. A while back, we added the requirement, or we added some code language, uh, related to our ability to prepare a formal evaluation of contractors when they're complete, uh, with the work, and then being able to use that in our evaluation of their responsibility to do future work with us when they, uh, submit another bid. We added subcontractors to that mix, uh, so that we can also be doing evaluations of subcontractors and using that for determining whether or not they're responsible.
So if we have an evaluation on a contractor that's not very good, do we have a mechanism in place to ban that contractor from future projects, or how do we handle that?
So it's not necessarily banning them from future projects, but we can use that evaluation form, and that's how our criteria is written in determining whether we would award to them and consider them a responsible.
You still want a bid, but the award would be in question then. Okay. Councilmember Pelosi?
Um, coming back to, uh, council member Wales', uh, concern about acquisition of property. Um, I notice over on a hundred and fourth, as you go over the Porter Bridge, we've bought up several parcels of land. And I don't, and I don't know if this was in the budget or not. It, you're shaking your head. It was in the budget. So how, how is it written up in the budget?
So that is part of the Lee Hill Road project, uh, and that, we actually had several conversations with council prior to doing those purchases. So each one of those properties actually came up for sale. Uh, and so rather than having them sold off and/or redeveloped into something else, the decision was made to use the funds that we had budgeted for the project to go ahead and, and purchase those properties because we know we're going to need a portion, if not all of those properties, for the Lee Hill Road improvement.
Okay. Here's my question then. Were those pieces, those parcels, was there three or four pieces?
Uh, we've purchased three properties there.
Three. Were they identified in the public works budget by, uh, were identified as those three parcels?
They were, so they were identified, um, I would hesitate to put, put it in there in our budget that way because that, that triggers some other things that may happen when we go to try to purchase those properties. Um, but it was identified in the Lee Hill Road corridor, um, with basically what was along the road corridor in order to fix Lee Hill Road as we go up the hill. Uh, there's quite a bit of, um, improvements that are necessary, widening and everything else, as well as, uh, in the future, when we go to close a hundred and second from Eighth Street, once we create another road connection over to a hundred and fourth, we need one of those properties in order to put the turnaround that's necessary.
Yeah, I understand the strategy that, that we've taken, but I was just trying to recall.
We, we reviewed the maps with council at the time.
Well, okay.
I think they were, they were brought to the city council for approval.
Yeah, I mean, they, enough to their case, they're specific.
You identified each individual one?
Yeah.
What year was that?
I want to, I want to say it was probably twenty, late twenty fifteen, and again, it's, for that particular one, it's, it's securing the right of way that we need for that future road corridor as those properties come up for sale.
Councilmember Wales?
I also want to thank you for the demolition, um, in that area, you know, to make it look, um, nice and tidy. And I was, we approved that, too. And I was shocked at how much it costs for abatement and all those other things in relationship to those properties. But thank you for making the most of this.
Any other questions? Thank you both very much.
Don't miss the blue carpet all.
And now, we're on our last item, I G update from Mr. Homan. Item four F.
Yeah, good idea.
Six, seven, the inning stretch.
Yeah.
It's just the ninth inning.
No one starts singing, takes me out to the ballgame, so.
First, let me, let me say that I am not trying to establish a new dress code here at the City of Auburn.
Kind of like that, Paul.
The first thing I heard when I got back was, where's your eye patch?
You're the head of your motorcycle.
Councilmember Pelosi?
Before we, we begin, can I just make a statement? So, I come in tonight, and on my tabletop is this pile. I have not had an opportunity to look at it. Now, you may say, well, you've saw parts of this before, and I agree, but there's also some new stuff in here. And I think it's kind of absurd that, that we're gonna make some decisions per your memo. We want direction tonight, when, when I haven't even had a chance to sit down and peruse what's in this.
Bill, it was sent to you this morning at eight fifty-eight. So this shouldn't be the first time that you saw it. It was emailed to you from Paul this morning with an apology for getting to you this, to you later than normal.
Yeah, I saw that, Mayor, but I was at another meeting all day.
So it's done.
So I guess, well, that's my tough luck, huh? But.
Just saying that it was sent out to you earlier.
So I'm not, I'm not too thrilled about having to make a decision on this tonight when we've had.
You don't make, you don't make decisions at study sessions, Bill.
Direction, Mayor.
That's why there's discussion, Bill.
Direction.
That's why there's discussion tonight.
I may not be able to give any directions because I haven't had enough time to look at it.
That's why there's discussion. There is nothing that is permanent from tonight's discussion. It is simply discussion. It can come back again. It is simply discussion.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, if I could respond to this, uh, Councilman Pelosi, yeah, I, I delivered that, um, to you guys on January fifteenth. And then also, when you emailed me and said there was information missing, I sent you another copy that I confirmed everything was there about a week later. Uh, I am, I am appa, I am sorry that you weren't able to read it, but I did send this out over a month ago. And, and again, we are not, this is, hopefully, the discussion tonight gets us to a laser beam focus on two issues, one of which is coverage and one of which is a timeframe. That's information I need to be able to come to our budget retreat in March and actually finalize a project idea that you then have to, have to make a decision on.
I have to say the same thing. I haven't had a chance. I was gone all day this morning since eight o'clock this morning, and I did see it on my, on my phone, on the email, but I have not had a chance to see it until I got here and, and able just to look at it. So, um, if you said you'd already sent it to us once before, and, uh...
It was emailed on January sixteenth at two thirty-seven P M. It is essentially the exact same documents tonight.
Okay. Well, it's, I, like I said, I didn't get a chance to look at it tonight. This is the first I'm gonna be looking at it, and if I've already seen it then. Um, but it would be nice for us to be able to get it a lot sooner than to get it today, so that we could have had a chance to review it. But that's my own personal, uh...
Why don't we let Paul go ahead and do his presentation, and then we kind of discuss this as we move along. Councilmember Wales?
Thank you for including the free and reduced lunch rate and the mobility rate. Thank you.
Are we ready to proceed?
Sure.
Two items on the table here, um, one of which, uh, is the coverage area, uh, that needs to be determined. We had a discussion here back in December about that. You posed some questions. The answers to those questions are in this document. And the questions that were answered were, were, were excellent questions. Um, who else is doing this? That was one of the items that was requested. Is anybody else doing this? And we provided some information on that. It's actually becoming, um, a popular project. Uh, I think when I first did my original research on this, I found over two hundred cities and counties that are working on municipal broadband. Since then, there are sixteen additional ones that have been added to the list, and I have not added Auburn, uh, until we have a, a consensus from council on which direction to go on this. Um, comparable size cities that are doing this, I added that to Gray's. Comparable size cities that are doing this, I added that to Grace Harbor, Clalow County, Union City, Palm Coast, Florida. And there are essentially two reasons they're doing this. One is economic development. They're seeing the value of turning their cities and counties into connected communities. And the other one is providing services for the underserved. In fact, the city of Tuckawilla, I think I got some information from, that I had seen from you guys, that you had sent me, too, is undertaking a project almost exactly similar to ours, where the mayor has, has determined that the underserved population needs services like everybody else. Another question that was asked was different coverage costs. So we split that out for your reference, and we split that out based on eighty percent, seventy percent, sixty percent, and fifty percent. I did one.
I'm sorry, I'm reading here.
What currently?
Councilmember Wales?
Thank you. Currently, what would you say our coverage rate is?
Right now, as of today, it's about sixteen percent. That's what we've been able to do so far.
Thank you.
And then, and the area that we are servicing right now is from twenty-nine down to thirty?
That's one of the areas. That was our, that was our pilot project area, which is, which is part of it. The other part of the project is, or part of the city that's already lit up is the entire downtown area.
Okay.
And Lesco Park and some other small areas. But it covers about fifteen percent of the under, of the low-income students.
Did you say sixteen or sixty?
Sixteen.
One-six?
Yes, one-six. Sorry. I will speak better for you. So what I did on the different coverage costs is I split it out by proposed percentages and then proposed project timelines. Since we are walking into a budget hearings and budget planning session, I want to provide the widest range of thought as to how to appropriate the funding for this. As I had said, I think in December, if y'all can write me a check for three million bucks, we can get this taken care of.
Yeah.
Okay. We all knew that was, it was funny, it was a joke. Reality is, if we can split this over several years, that's less of an impact on the budget, and it makes it a more viable conversation that we can have. The third question was Access Auburn usage. As I mentioned, in December, we just don't have the equipment to break out who the individual people are using Access Auburn. Depending on the time of day, depending on the, on the day of the week, and depending on what's going on in Auburn, we have users anywhere from a hundred and fifty to three thousand. We have a big events here, like our Veterans Day Parade, our usage goes way up, way, way up. Other days, when it's snowing and raining and quiet, usage goes way down. Question four, what's the economic impact? And I actually added some, some white papers here for your reference and for your review. There is no doubt, cities and counties are using this as an economic development option. I know our original intent here was to provide internet access for low-income students, and that remains our primary focus. This was a question the council came up with, and I wanted to provide you some information on that.
Councilmember Trump, you have a?
Is the Cube using the, this access?
I'm sorry.
The Cube, the, the new business that we just opened up here at the Train Depot?
You're talking about the incubator?
Yeah.
Oh, incubator. No, actually, actually, that was an option, but I believe Comcast made a donation that was then used to provide dedicated access.
Okay.
Councilmember Wales?
Okay, so back on page three, what have we paid to date? What should be the cost for the sixteen percent that we have now?
Well, there's, there's two, there's two pieces to that question.
Yeah.
Okay. Access Auburn, the original, was put in over the past four or five years. It actually began before I got here. That, we never ran the numbers on how much coverage that was. Since then, we added the, the area down by Twenty-Ninth, and we've added some, some park expansion, and we've got about thirty thousand dollars invested, that I know of. I'm not sure what the original investment was.
My understanding was that this low-cost usage that we were providing for students was for educational platform and not to look at movies and safari and some of those other kinds of things that I know would have economic development. So I can't see the economic development impact other than helping kids graduate from school. So how does that help businesses other than kids graduating from school, which is very, very important?
Sure. You bet. As our primary focus is providing services for students, okay? That remains our primary focus. As I mentioned back in December, there is a tipping point, and that tipping point will have to be determined between us and Auburn schools, where we hand off the actual bandwidth internet access to the school system. That then drops off of our plate. At that point in time, the infrastructure we've built out does have an impact on economic development. You know, I mean, you guys have heard me talk about this before, and I will continue to talk about it until I can't stand me to talk about it anymore. Is Auburn becoming a connected city has a, has a major impact. It's not just economic development. It also draws families. It also draws not just companies, but it draws the perception that Auburn is, is moving into the twenty-first century. But that is not something that is the primary focus. That's the, that's the, the side effect of this kind of a project. So, yeah, our, our original intent here is not to provide movie access. We're not, we're not doing this to provide entertainment.
Okay.
Okay? Now, there are some technical issues, and just to kind of give you an example, a lot of educational content is provided on YouTube nowadays, okay?
Yeah.
And we want to make sure that that protocol is allowed through. Now, that means you're going to have some people probably sitting over here at the coffee shop watching the viral videos. That's a risk we have to take, as long as we can make sure that the school system can provide the teaching materials that they wish to provide.
So for sixteen percent coverage, cost thirty thousand. If I multiply that times three, I could get to fifty thousand with another ninety or sixty thousand. So why is the additional percentages costing so much more than the original sixteen percent?
Well, as I had indicated, there was a, a large section of downtown Auburn that was lit up, okay? And I have no idea what the cost was on that, so it's, it's kind of six of one and a half doesn't the other.
I got it.
I completely understand your question, though. I, I do. And as I'd mentioned back in December, you know, these numbers are our best estimate as of December one. You know, as we continue our partnering with our vendors and look at the technological, technology advances that take place, we are fully expecting this price to come down.
I was just asking John if you knew the locations where we are right now, currently at the sixteen percent.
Yeah.
Low-income apartments near Auburn Way North, downtown, all of downtown, and then apartments near, near.
Sorry.
Green Farm Park, and then Lesco Park. How were those chosen, those?
Downtown Auburn was chosen.
It was R E N.
Yeah. It was R E N. The area down on Twenty-Ninth, when we got, we received information from the school system. It was confidential in nature and showed us the addresses of all their students, and it also showed us the addresses of the reduced lunch students. And we had a, a, a very dense pocket of students down there on Twenty-Ninth across from Green Farm Park. We were also very close with our existing infrastructure. If you remember, the foundation piece of this and why we can do it is because we have a lot of existing infrastructure, and that's the fiber backbone that we have. One of the key success measures for any kind of municipal broadband is your existing fiber infrastructure, because that carries what we call backhaul. That's the volume of information that travels back and forth. Because we were so close with infrastructure and because we had a very dense population of, of reduced lunch, low-income students there, that was the perfect place to run a test. It's a perfect place to run a test.
Let me ask another question.
Go ahead.
So is there a way, you, you probably already have this, but is there a way to map out what we cur, we currently have? What's fifty percent? What would you recommend for fifty percent? What would you recommend for sixty percent, seventy percent, and eighty percent? Can you do that?
Yes, we can.
Like overview, overview, overview?
Yes, we can, and we can do that now because we finally got to hire our new G I S person. We've been operating at half-capacity here for the past four months, so we've been struggling a little bit. But we can do that now, yes.
In, in my days at the Boeing Company, we had viewfoils, right?
Oh, yes. That's a long time ago.
We had a, a before, and then they could slap another viewfoil on top for an overview.
We can do that electronically now.
Yeah, and that's, I think that would, I think, I think that would help decision.
We can do that. We do have, right now, an existing map of all of the wireless hotspots within Auburn. We just haven't published it yet because we've been a little understaffed, but we have that one. The next thing we can do is we can, we can show proposed fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty percent coverages.
Councilmember Wales?
If you look at the last page of this packet, you can see that Gilda Ray is at seventy-four percent free and reduced lunch. Next to it is Pioneer, which is in the same general area, the school next to it, eighty-six percent free and reduced lunch. And Olympic, which is the, one of the primary service middle schools, is at seventy percent. And it's interesting to note that Auburn High School is at fifty-seven percent, which is actually higher than West Auburn, where a lot of our alternative, alternative low-income kids. So I, you, you really can do that with your school overlays and, and show that. The, the district of, the district average is fifty-five percent free and reduced lunch. And I really believe in connectivity, even though I have a lot of technical challenges with connectivity, but I also believe in road connectivity. And as we sit down and look at budget in a couple of weeks, I can make a case for fifty percent coverage, but I'm going to be moving for as much money as possible for our road connectivity. That's just my personal stand.
Paul, go ahead. You have a question?
Yeah. Paul, could you give us that mapping?
Yes, ma'am.
Before Monday?
Yeah.
This isn't coming on the council memo.
But it'd be nice, it'd be still nice to have review and.
Oh, well, yeah, but I just want to understand the communication.
I understand that.
This is discussion. That's what this is.
Anything else you want to?
I'm good. I just want to make sure I'm here in case there's any questions, but if y'all want to go home, I'm.
Any last questions for Paul?
Thank you very much.
Hi, Paul. Have you tried a Red Band?
I have a red one, and I also have a pirate one, so.
He's a crypt, huh, Paul?
He's a crypt.
All right. That includes our Public Works and Community Development discussion areas?
Okay, we're going to resume here with the final thing here, and that's our lovely matrix.
Thanks, Paul.
So if those focus area chairs will look at the matrix here, we've got some, still have some missing dates and possibly some items to add to the list, if you so inclined.
I have talked to attorney Dan Hyde, and he will talk to his prosecutor attorneys and get me some dates as soon as he can. I have talked to Dana, and Dana said the same thing, that she will look at the calendar and get back to me.
Okay. When can we, do you think we can expect some dates? Next week?
Soon.
Well, we've, we've been, we've been discussing this for a couple of times now, and.
Dan, do you want to step in?
What I was going to suggest is that I talked to my prosecution team, and they felt they could put together a report, and we can get that report to the council, and I think that'll answer most, if not all, of the questions, and then if there is more, then we can go from there. We'll be getting that as quickly as possible.
Well, on that, on that report, will they be presenting it to us, or that's what we would like?
Well, let me, let me say this. It may be that it'll lend itself to that. It may be that it won't be necessary, depending upon how it looks, but we'll get the report to you quickly, and then we will.
Okay. All righty. Yes, Councilmember.
I think that our next presentation isn't until the twenty-sixth of March, so we ought to be able to have something to, or any day before the twenty-sixth.
Can we pencil that date in?
Yes.
Yes.
Three twenty-six.
The homeless.
Is that for all three or just that one?
Just one.
Just that one? Okay, well, that's a start. Okay. And the others will TBD.
Yes.
All right. I guess the, looking up here, Councilmember De Corsi, you got any information for us?
Well, let's go ahead and plan that for the April twenty-third, and then get together with Ingrid and make sure we're, we're good for that.
I know our schedule's really.
I'm sorry, the items number two and three on the Public Works and Community Development.
For both of those?
Both of them, yeah.
So if I can add three, we've actually already done.
Oh, okay. All the centers, yeah, we did the centers. That's right.
Taking that one off.
Is it?
So I'm sorry.
Yeah, we did that one.
Item three comes off.
That comes off.
Okay.
Good show.
What were we doing with item two?
We're taking number three off.
But item two.
Two, right. Will be four twenty-three.
Thank you.
Hmm?
And which item was at the next, you want to know?
That's the homeless, none of that day?
Homelessness?
Yeah.
Three twenty-six for that.
That's number seven.
And number nine should be ready by then as well.
So homelessness and so seven and nine?
The, um, ready? Okay.
On item five, I mentioned this at the last study session, but we're having a service, line, program presentation.
Right.
Service, line, program, N L C. This gentleman's coming from Pittsburgh.
It's on the twenty-sixth.
On March twenty-sixth. So that'd fall under the item five, right?
Yes.
Okay, then we have finance.
Well, Shelley's already covered streamlined sales tax update and cost of service study. Both of those will need updating at the end of this legislature, depending on what's coming out of Olympia. And then the only thing I've really got hanging is Livable Cities Update by Jeff Tate, and the, don't really have a firm date on that yet. And then we've got budget coming up, which will affect all of us for multiple times and covered quite extensively in our retreat.
Councilmember Trump, man.
Largo had her hands up before I did. Largo had her hands up before I did.
Okay, I'm sorry. Councilmember Wales?
I'd like to see us add to this the legislative trailer presentation and what's going on there and their water issue, and update on their, their water billing issue.
What focus area do you feel that should fall under?
You know, I, I don't.
That one can actually just be more of an email once it's been resolved, as opposed to having it as a discussion item at the study session that can easier be done as a memo to council.
Okay. Along that same line of memos to council, could you give us maybe a white? could you give us maybe a white paper on the, what's going on regarding Bob Zimmerman and the concrete wall or concrete block wall? What the issues are so that we don't, just so we know some background?
That is an issue that's in Public Works and actually in planning, so we can get together and talk about that, some of the things.
Yes, right.
I think we owe, this is a repetitive thing. Every week, we hear the thing.
Yeah.
And I think that it's time that we get a position on, from the city.
Yeah, that's why...
Mr. Zimmerman has worked extensively with the city for over two years. He has heard quite a bit, and there's been quite a bit, a significant amount of staff time. Mr. Zimmerman did not like the answer he received. However, there has been a lot of expert time put into the answers that he was given.
A white paper would be really helpful, so that we're all on the same page and can support or ask appropriate questions.
And I'd like to put it to bed.
Yes.
Dan, one thing I've been thinking about for our attorneys, if they could collaborate, consolidate all the billings on the court fees and also on traffic fees? Is that, is that for...
We can pull some information from the court, but those would not be something that we would necessarily track.
Okay.
But we can get some statistics from the court.
Okay.
What she's asking for is there's a program out there that allows individuals who have multiple fees and assessments against them to pull them together, and we would like to have a group come and make a presentation to us.
That would probably be the court, because that's a court program and...
Yes.
That's under R.O.A., that's under H.R.
Okay.
It would not be, it would not be the legal department. This is something started in Tuckawilla, it's gone from there.
So, I don't know where that needs to go in the agenda.
Okay. You know, there was a judge who did that presentation, Judge Tucker. And she said she would be willing to come in and do a presentation on that.
Did you want that on the same date? I don't know.
No.
Whatever works.
I don't know.
Pardon me? I'm so sorry, which focus area?
It'd be on the...
It'd be under muni services, I think.
Human services.
Muni services.
Or wouldn't be on the human services?
Courts or muni services.
Okay. Fine.
You concur with that?
Yes.
Then I'll give you Mrs. Tucker's information.
Okay, Councilmember Wales?
Another area that's, I like it when we can be responsive to the citizens that come to us. And one of the areas that was brought to us was the sign issue. And so, I think it's time that we review the signs that we allow and the requirements and whatever, and look at that issue as it relates to real estate signs, campaign signs, babysitting signs, soccer signs. I just think that...
Didn't that come before the council once before, I believe?
A long time ago, and we had a citizen that wanted us to look at it again as it relates to some of these other signs.
Sign pollution and all that kind of stuff, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Pelosi?
Regarding signs, you know, when we were, the city was hurting, businesses were hurting, we opened it up.
Yeah.
We opened it up downtown.
Maybe it's time to look at it again.
It was just downtown, for A boards and things downtown.
Yeah. Councilmember Wales?
We opened it up for the real estate people, and I think that real estate is booming. And when you look at it up there on Lee Hill, we have them advertising for homes that are not even at Auburn, that are in other cities, but they have their signs up on Lee Hill. So, I think that we need to look at just signs generally.
Who would be the party that handled that?
Comes out of Jeff.
From Jeff.
So, what category would that go under?
Let's see. Yes, well, municipal?
Municipal.
Yeah, muni services again. They're here on the road.
I like started to do something.
But keeping track of all this, right?
Help shot it.
Would that under municipal services and not Public Works?
Signs?
I think it's Public Works. They are usually the ones that send out the enforcement letters.
Loading codes and...
Actually, the planning department that sends out those issues, not Public Works.
Can we toss a coin?
We'll arm wrestle later.
Let's see.
Let's put it under muni services. Any other items? Yes?
Yeah, I've been hearing from certain union down the street that has some issues with folks that hang out around the transit center. And access to bathrooms seems to be an issue. And it's resulted in evidence being left behind in the flower beds. And just curious what might be able to be done about that. Is that a sound transit issue? Is it something is? Is a sound transit issue?
They actually lock the doors.
I guess I could call.
Right, activities.
Activities, safety places.
But it is, it is getting to be a real problem.
Disgusting, yeah. So, they lock them at certain times of the day, or?
Nights.
A lot of times, it's at nights, yeah.
That's usually when we experience most of the problems.
We can probably, Ingrid, we can get a policy update, can't we, from Sound Transit on what they do? And we can get that emailed out to council.
Thank you.
Put us to white paper.
Signs is part of community development.
Yeah, it should be under quads.
Okay, I stand corrected. The sign issue will deal with under...
Public Works.
Public Works. Work community. One of the two. The man over there. Okay, any other issues? Okay, folks, let's see if there's any other things going on here before we adjourn the meeting. And are there any other discussion items or new business? We stand adjourned, folks.